On Cohasset 143 local cable or Facebook Live. Interested parties may also join by utilizing the Zoom link at the bottom of the agenda. Please remember that this is a meeting held in public and it's not a public meeting. If you have any comments, please utilize the comment section of the agenda. Virtual comments will only be monitored on the Zoom link. All speakers, if you choose to speak, please state your full name and address for the record. So may I have a call to order, please? Mr. Flex? All in my presence?
Jack Grayden, present.
David Ferrante, here.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in public. By the Legion's GFR, by the State of America, through the Republic, religious and foundation of physical, religious, and social. Colleagues at the table, Mr. Senior as well, that our mics are bright now live, except inside the green. And if you want to mute your mic, you just hit the press, press button. And if people in the audience can't hear us, just let us know, try to speak more directly into the microphones. Do we have any public comments at this time? Anything on Zoom? Nothing on Zoom? Okay, so our first order of business is the South Shore Community Center Halloween Stroll for October 20th, 2024. The hours of the stroll are 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We're going to set up 12:30 to 4:30. This is a longstanding community center event. And having taken my children to it, it's very fun for kids. So we have two applications to consider. Chris, is that proactive event application and the one day entertainment application?
Correct. And Jake was right there.
Oh, hi Jake. I'd add on the Halloween.
No, the, the chair stole my thunder. It's a longstanding event and it'll be a great time.
And there was request to block out the streets. That's traditional, correct?
It is, yeah. It's very low impact. It's very quick and they will have a detail there. And, and I was in contact with the organizer today. And I think everything looks good if we get the board's approval.
Okay, great, thank you. So can I make a motion to approve the South Shore Community Center Halloween Stroll gen application?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Grayden, second by Mr. Brady. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the one day entertainment application for South Shore Community Center Halloween Stroll? By Mr. Brady, second.
Setting.
Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. The next event is the South Shore Art Center Art Off the Wall Event November 7th, 2024. This is an event from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. And it's a repeat event. And they're asking for a one day legal license. I know no one's here probably, but does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, so Mr. Brady's made a motion to approve the South Shore Art Center Art Off the Wall Event November 7th. Do we have a second? You have a second, wrong motion.
Second.
Mr. Ferrante, second. So Mr. Brady made a motion, Mr. Ferrante, second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, thank you very much. Tracy, you'll let them all know?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a presentation from our Human Resource Director, Megan James. First of all, open it.
Sure. As time comes up, I'll just go through. So, boy, have we come a long way. When I was in charge of doing this job a decade ago, the select board said to me, Chris, you need to create as your first thing a HR function. Should I hire somebody? No, this is just, just coming from function. Was the first thing because the town had not been done much HR work. Yep. And they had not personal community at the time. Only changed in the 90s. Not the personal community, the way, but the structure had to be. So, so that's what we did. And I remember in my first couple of months, somebody stopped coming to work. I said, well, she's sick. I said, well, what is the M L A for? He said, what's that? I said, family medical leave? So I had went to the federal website, pulled it down, and then we worked. We've come a long way. And, and that was not only because the board at the time said, hey, this is a really important thing. But it's also the right thing to, to have a, a really high functioning government, which is what the community is expecting. You have to have a high functioning staff. High quality HR. So it built as a function. I did some part-time consulting. Our first day job, I had to say, should join Ashley. We're going to have this weekend. Eventually she took a jump in Ashley, which would make it a lot less. And Megan is, and we proceed to the directors. Our, our, our HR director, was kind of hope state through retirement, this day through retirement. She was a COVID retired. So after COVID, she signed up, that's it. And so we went through a kind of period of interim that we did have Kim Voist. She did great with us. Kennedy Ben, you know, very active contract negotiations, the person who she was helping. She about Association. Then she left and became the assistant town manager. So we keep, we keep graduating people to other places. And after Cheryl did a great job of stepping in front of us. It's like we really, you need to fill this job. A lot of things this year, the old screen project, trying to make a show. We start to look at, and, and so Megan, Megan had always come on, on the radar as someone who was, was just outstanding under the staff at the issue team. Also wanted to be a chair. From the beginning, she's like, give me more, give me. And and it's based on her background, I'll give you a little bit of that, because I don't know if everybody knows her. Megan's a South Shore manager, she had a family, so she did a different. She went to Duxbury High School and then graduated from Castleton State, Vermont, I believe. Uh, she began in mathematics. She started a management career right after that, going to a place called Village of Proprietors, we mean, living. But that was, that was in Marshfield. She came to direct the dining service. She managed a multi-generation staff and made that whole thing work. And she said, you know what, I'm going to do some. And she went off to get her masters of science in library science. She did that at Simmons. And during that, she actually worked for us, part-time, part-time. We couldn't keep her treatment off to, ran off, given the young services, you know, the young service laborer. And then moved right up and became a laborer. During that time, she managed 18 people. And managed during a $3 million renovation of the library. Big responsibility. She became a featured speaker because she did all kinds of computer library. Bringing computers in the library. She spoke at a conference in Washington D.C. She was a regular speaker at the Masters Library Association about programming leadership. And also ran the head of the general, much earlier, so Megan, because she always wants to be a team leader. Was part of collective bargaining there for years, being the shadow of a general. It was a good job. When she, she came to us, she jumped right in with ours and bringing this, making a lot of people sort of putting into it. She went to the staff and worked a lot with the trustees. And also sat as part of our library. She's incredible because, you know, you're raising kids and that family, you have plenty of free time. She served on both personnel and capital budgeting, it's normal. So I don't know whether free time actually, that wasn't on here. She, she also stepped up here. And so we organized the very first H R director. She had 22 directors, which is not, because she kept 20. So we streamlined in the first couple of years. And, and so many areas just fell in place to actually public works. I am buildings, we kind of collaborate, building condition. And, you know, IT is IT. When it came to what we called community services, the front-facing parts, senior, senior, so there's a few. Recreation. It became St. Harper and the animation service. There was really no holes to call community services. And it went, and we saw our first day job, we had collaborated and bringing together working. And, and eventually, and Megan, so after Kim, Megan actually, she, so she was marrying and the community services. She was already meeting collaborative programs. So it became an actual step, so we had talked, she was, my kids are going to sleep in, I'll come to you. And then over the winter, she said, you know what, I'm actually learning. And we didn't talk to her. And she had also gotten a, in all of this, every time she got a degree, it's part of the subject, MMA collaborative program. I think it's in finance. Trying to get her into other, a bigger one, Cheryl's. She bothered me, it was for two cycles. So we talked and we're like, hey, you know, do you really get ready to do this? And it wasn't a skill question. It was not a question to the skills, it really was give time to just to do what you wanted to do. And library transition. And here we are. So Megan has been doing this now for six months. It's hard. She hasn't changed very much, February is the change. So it's like a re-introduction in fall. How about the schools, the kickoff? And so that's a little bit about Megan. And, and one of the things that she jumped into was, was just, one of those working towards getting a, what's called, we're going to do an insurance interest employee. Decide now, we'll have portals for employees, but we should make everything, this should just be an HR website, everybody can see. We have the meaning conscious of it already, but they'll be there, the other, you know, access to our benefits. Employee handbook, handbook, which the board sees related groups, which was one of our HR accomplishments in English, you know? That was a big change, just the, over the end of the 10. Not exactly modern HR practices, so that could actually change. Which is, so, so that, that is something amazing, working, it's also getting around. Why am I speaking?
Don't do a presentation. All right, thank you, Chris. Yeah, I just got to add a bit of, hold on forward.
Should be.
Um, thank you all for having me tonight. Okay. Um, thank you for having me this evening. Looking forward to sharing with you all the things that we've done over the past six months with the HR department. Very proud about how much we've moved it forward and the amount of transparency that we're working on. One of the things I feel really passionate about in community services and also in HR is streamlining work flow. And making sure that any content that department heads need to be successful or community members is available and it's easy to get to. So that's one of my, my first goals here as the HR director is to ensure that any information that somebody's looking for, whether it be a department head or a community member, that it's accessible, clear, and makes sense. So I'll start with excellent. So I want to talk a little bit about the HR department and what we're in charge of here in Cohasset. We found it a little bit different, and so I want to make sure you understand what responsibilities are. So HR is in charge of classification and compensation, employee labor relations. So we're talking about collective bargaining agreements. Employee and committee events, so we can get to do the fun stuff too, and we'll talk about that a little bit. Leave administration, Chris had talked a little bit about M M L A. We've implemented a system for that to ensure that that's streamlined and that we're paying attention to time used and things like that. So our employees can take care of what they need to take care of. Professional development, and I will expand on that a little bit later. Recruitment and selection, we're going to be talking about that a lot tonight. And regulatory compliance, so making sure that we're following state laws and that our anything that we need for insurance is, is there. Our vision and mission, so these are actually, these are both drafts because they haven't been approved by the board. And I think that's something that we need to do for, for creation, for HR, business statement. Right. So vision, I'll just read it. So our vision is to achieve a resourceful and dynamic HR department that is committed to implementing best practices. We are committed to nurturing a respectful and positive work culture focused on providing the highest service delivery for the class of community. And our mission, we are dedicated to nurturing growth and achievement within the organization. Our mission is to engage with employees, equip them with essential skills, and provide responsive services. We strive to empower them to excel in an ever-changing work environment, ensuring they receive and receive the support and the guidance they need to succeed. And we are committed to driving excellence and embracing positive achievements. So this is what we call the skin of the website. So the website is not live yet. We've been working on it for six months now with Civic Plus, which is a website development company that we've used for all of our other websites, town websites. I just want to highlight some of the things that we'll be talking about. So we've gone over already about us working in Cohasset. So part of this website is not only to share knowledge with the community and our staff, but also potential groups and, and people who might be joining us in the future. So in that dropdown, we're going to have things like information on the public service loan forgiveness. That's an appealing part about coming, working the public service. We'll have information on our local restaurants and anything else that would draw a candidate to working here in Cohasset. Employee internet, so that is going to be a password-protected portal that's going to bring our employees to a place where they can find forms like mileage reimbursement. Proposal for travel to go to a conference, things like that, that we would only see, have an employee fill out. And also that, that would stay up to date so that we don't have 20 different versions of a mileage reimbursement arm floating around. It's just one consistent form. Employee opportunities is front and center. Benefits will actually link over to the treasure collectors page. Right now, the treasure collectors department is in charge of benefits. But we're working with them to make sure that we have a clear outline of what the benefits are. And actually, they have something in place right now that's pretty great. Employee forward is our payroll system. So again, it's password-protected for employees. Classification and compensation. So we want to make sure that this is something that's transparent, so that will be presented on that. Our wellness portal is through Maya, so that's where we'll find information on maybe the E A P, which is next to it. But also some of our fitness programs that we do for employees through Maya. Any any grant opportunities that a department might want to take advantage of health and wellness. Recent accommodation policy will be front and center. Collective bargaining agreements will be all of our contracts. The present contracts and also the past contracts for people to review. Workplace guide, which is our personnel guidebook. So anybody who's not covered under our collective bargaining unit would follow this, this guidebook. And then our organizational charts. We'll have those charts linked to job description so that everybody understands what their job description is. The community understands what everybody's job descriptions are and that so that there's consistency in the knowledge. Underneath that, we have our training and development calendar. So that's kind of our fine calendar, if you will. So all of our fitness programs will be there that we do through Maya. All of our, we're looking into doing.
By the way, welcome.
Thank you.
Why do you use the E A P and Maya?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, so Maya. Sure, sure.
But that would be very helpful.
Let me explain further, sure. So Maya is what towns use, our town and surrounding towns use for our insurance. And so this covers kind of risk management and covers those types of things. So when we talk about Maya, we're talking about ensuring that employees have information that they need to be supported, whether they're going through something and they need to access the E A P, which is the Employee Assistance Plan. Looking for. Or information on, you know, our, again, our fitness programs. The E A P covers an amazing amount of things that I, when I was the library director, really didn't know. But now that I'm understanding, the, the E A P is not just for somebody who's in crisis. And I think that's the, the perception is a lot of employees don't want to access the E A P because then, then you're kind of zoned in in, that you're in crisis or that we might find out, right, that, that something's going on in their lives. But the E A P is for anyone, including managers, to access, to be able to navigate situations anonymously and with the help of and the support of Maya. So it's an incredible tool, and I've been working on, on the Wellness Committee. And some of the folks at Maya have really broadened our scope here in Cohasset to ensure that we're using that to, to the best of our ability. Training and development calendar, so that, as I said, a lot of our activities and our training sessions will be listed on there. And then underneath, we have know before, which is something the staff knows about, but not the community or the select board. This is an ongoing training module that gets launched out to our employees. So things like sexual harassment, things like cybersecurity, we, Ron uses it as well for cybersecurity. But we do things kind of HR function related as well. Microaggressions we did recently. So every couple of months, we send out something to ensure that we are, everybody's understanding their policies and that they're performing best practices and that we train them appropriately. LinkedIn Learning is something that the libraries purchased, and it's something that any, anybody, any consumer could purchase. But we have the luxury of having it, as long as you have a Cohasset library card, you can access LinkedIn Learning. So anyone on our team, or really in the community that has a library card, could access the excessive amount of training that they have LinkedIn Learning. I think they have anything from, you know, Excel to baking a pie. So there's a lot of different things that could be, be learned through LinkedIn Learning. MMA is the Mass Municipal Association. They also offer an incredible amount of training to our, to our staff. Training specific for D B W foremen or safety training, or there was chainsaw training recently that I saw to make sure that you understand how to use a chainsaw on site, that you're following all the safety procedures. But also, you know, building a positive team, motivating your team, things like that. So again, a broad range of things and also provided by experts in the field. And, but people also that we know within Massachusetts, which is nice too. It personalizes that a bit. And then again, more Maya training. So the hot topic. Hiring policy and procedure. So obviously, recently, there's been some discussion regarding our policies and procedures regarding hiring. And I want to make sure that we get to a place where everybody feels good about our processes and they feel good about the people that we're hiring and what we're looking for in our, in our teams. So the new policy is to, this is a summary. First to prepare. So what I propose is the first thing that HR will do was meet with the town manager to discuss job openings before posting them. It will start to set the recruitment strategy. So we'll review the job description and establish expectations. And I think this is the key piece of this whole thing is that at that time, we will bring in the appropriate board or committee to review the recruitment strategy and the job description for feedback. So that our, our boards and committees who want to be involved feel like they have a time where they can work with us to set the, the procedure and, and how we're going to move forward, what we're looking for. And so that we're moving forward as a team and that there's some buy-in. So at that point, HR will create the job posting, briefly describe the job as a job opening and communicate the town Cohasset brand, which is really important. It's, it's part of how we get people in the door and excited about working here is creating a brand that is appealing to somebody who has the skills that we need. So at that point. So all of the job postings will be posted concurrently on the town's website and external sources. So depending on the, on the department, sometimes there's listservs or professional affiliations that we can, can sign the job to. So internal employees with satisfactory employment status can apply for internal job openings, just like everybody else. The applicants will be considered based on the qualifications and of course, the things that we talked about with the board committee. The HR department, the town manager will screen applicants, will conduct interviews. Other recruitment strategies agreed upon by the HR director and the town manager additionally will read will be additionally done. Excuse me. The strategies that were talked about with the board. So so at that time, we'll also implement any other things that the board committee asks to be implemented, whether it's a group interview that they wanted to have in addition to the process, whether it's, you know, additional screening or something of that nature. So after the decision's made to hire the candidate, it's made by the town manager. The HR director will conduct professional reference check, employment verification, any necessary background checks are tested. So different departments need different things. For hiring a town accountant, they're going to need a credit check. If we're hiring somebody from the D B W, there's a drug test that's involved. So there's also physical for their D O T card. So each department has kind of different things that need to be tested for. And once the satisfactory results come in, we'll send an offer letter to that. And this is a hot topic, so I want to welcome some questions from the select board, if that's okay, about this particular policy that if I could clarify or answer, I'd be happy to do.
What I was going to ask about was our minutes.
I'm seeing all the script. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
On this particular matter, the hiring. I think on the, as an advertising portion, and again, this is just the overview, doesn't get into policy procedures with things we put in. But I think it needs to be put in as to where it gets advertised. And giving the flexibility of other places, there's going to be platforms that, you know, that don't exist today, that could be there two years from now. But at least a list of places where it should be listed. And depending upon the particular job as well. So yes, you've got your MMA, your monster economy, your D, you can be typical places like that. But, but we should be looking to go up to other places like, you know, for instance, if we're looking for directorships, higher-end things, going to the, the schools of management. So in other words, you know, schools that do masters in public administration, finance, schools that do masters in accounting. And again, they, they might not give us what we're looking for fully, but those are the places to, to, to try and find candidates. Because with all the candidates that we've talked about before, where the town is located, salary that we can give as a town. There's, there's things on our end that kind of restrict us from being able to play ball in a much bigger town. So we need to look at, look at those things on the other side.
You upset?
You're kind of.
Oh, Chris.
The only thing that I would add, and I don't know if it needs to be explicitly stated here, is just to round up on the communication. So making sure that people are aware that there's a situation out there and it could affect a certain population, a certain board, a certain debate, and then making sure they're getting updates. I'm sure that's something you naturally do as part of your daily work. Consider maybe putting language in this around that in the communication process. Because I think that goes a long way to making sure people feel engaged and giving them the opportunity to say.
That's great, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for adding that. I think, you know, the more that we can be transparent about the process and involve the board or committee, I think is important. Where I, where I struggled a little bit when I was working on this policy is that every board and committee has a different charge, right? There are some that have bylaws that are in place. There are some that have actual Massachusetts law. There are some that have actual Massachusetts laws in place, some are advisory, some are. And instead of letting that hang up the policy, the point of this is that no matter what they are, whether there's laws or bylaws, people want to be involved. And and so and actually, sometimes they don't want to be involved, right? There's some communities that are not interested at all. They just say, hire somebody. So it's important that we have this step where we have that conversation, that everyone's clear. Whether the board says, you know, I um, thanks for inviting us. We're not interested in 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 the hiring process. Fine. Or, you know, thanks for inviting us. We all want to talk about how this is gonna, how this is gonna go. And um, we might not all completely agree, but at least we can find a place that we all feel comfortable to move forward. So I think that's the key to this policy is that it's versatile. Um, but also um, people, committee, boards and committees have a place at the table and they understand them as a table and they feel like they do and it's part of the steps. Um, and then um, towards the middle of the process, the interviewing process, we can then implement some of the things that they desired and their feedback. Um, as long as we can be clear and and that it's fair to our candidates. So I think I I'm hoping this policy gives a little bit more space and a little bit more comfort for people to be engaged without and and that we are transparent, without us being too transparent, right? Because HR does have a a piece of it that needs to be confidential. And so uh, that needs to be able to take place too. So it's a balance and um I hope this policy strikes a better balance.
Actually, um, as the votes said, here's a great job. I see you stress that. That engagement is key. Racing career is. I also understand, so. You are bound by the confidentiality. I would encourage you to stress that to stakeholders who participate in things that you just cannot revolve. But hopefully everything on the game. Everything is big. We have together, so.
Thank you. I hope this this nails the delicate balance between confidentiality that I need to have as the HR director and the input that's so valuable. Bye.
Yeah, thank you, May, and I think this has gone a long way to clarify. Boards and committees who we utilize, people that are hired and reaching out to them to find out exactly what they need, challenges they've had, and you have a good point, some of them aren't going to care. But I know um, I was on conservation for a number of years. And when it came to hiring a conservation agent, we had a pretty good idea of what we were looking for. And so providing that input to you will make it easier for you to do a good job. And practically speaking, get people engaged early on. We can avoid some of the things that happened recently, which were unfortunate. And um, it's good to see that we're moving beyond that. Um, and thank you. I think you've done a very good job. And it's it's also clarity. You, when you say what it is and it's clarity and qualifications, then it heads off a lot of stuff. And that allows us to do, you can do your job, the town can do his job. So thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and again, thank you for all the work on this. Um, I would say also things when it gets into the, you know, the policy is that we should be posting for every uh employment opportunity. I think that's important. Uh, and that if we do have an internal candidate for that particular position, uh, that that should be also conveyed to the applicants to let them know that, uh, you know, once they put in the resume, they can be to put on the posting or whatever is the best practice. Uh, so that they know there's either an internal candidate or a strong internal candidate or something to that matter. Uh, so that they know, uh, you know, if they want to move forward with that or or not. Um, I think that that's important as well, so that they feel at the end of the process that they know, boy, if it was something that I didn't know, it's it's going to be going for this particular position as well. But yeah, that that can be sussed out in, you know, the actual policies.
So I also think that that can be worked through during the recruitment strategy. So, you know, some of those questions about internal, external candidates, how do we want to move forward? You know, all those types of conversations can have, can be can be done during that time. And um, I I think again, that makes this policy very versatile.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's another slide. There is. Yes. So this is my fun slide. Um, so I want to talk about um some of the training opportunities that we have um coming up for our staff. Um, I'm working on a fairly robust um training um agenda over the next year. Um, just to provide some more tools so that we can be even better than we already are. Um, so Patrick Abera is coming. Um, he spoke recently at the HR um, uh, annual conference um symposium. And it was an online, just one day Zoom. And he talked about um healthy workplace culture is the secret sauce to success. And I just thought he was an amazing speaker. He had some really great tips of quick things that we could do within our departments to make them better. Um, and so he's coming to join us in October. He's also offering that same day, positive motivation, uh, positive performance. Um, so one of my goals this year is to start um working with our middle management. It's middle management's not an easy thing. It's not easy being a middle manager. And so, and I think we gear a lot of our training towards departments. So one of the things I'm focusing on this year is is middle management um and 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 building them up and their skill sets so that they're confident in what they do every day. Um, the Employees Assistance Program, which I talked about previously, uh, they're coming next week to our department head meeting. Um, they're doing a training on bringing out the best of people, positive management techniques. Kind of self-explanatory, but again, just some some quick ways that we can uh to culture add to our departments. Um, and then Carolyn's coming from K P Law. Um, she's going to be doing an open meeting law and conflict of interest training, and that will be open to employees and boards as well. Um, and then fun step, we always have our November Employee Appreciation Event and then our Board and Committee Appreciation Event. Um, and we'll be kicking off a once a month Thursday coffee at King Street. Um, one thing that we've seen since we've needed to uh split our offices up is that, you know, sometimes the folks at King Street don't see the folks at Town Hall like we used to do every day. Um, and so while we still see each other often, I don't want to paint an incorrect picture here. We see each other often. I think it would be nice to to draw folks over to King Street a little bit more, some of the teams, so that we have kind of a a set meeting space who would make sure that we see folks that maybe we don't see every day. Um, so um, those are kind of the fun things coming up. I'm hoping to continue to implement those, very much looking forward to the website. Hoping that will bring some transparency. Happy to come back when that's launched if 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 interested. Um, and thank you again for having me this time. Bye. That's great. Oh, next, the other question. Sure.
It's a fine line.
Yeah.
You know that.
Yes.
We do not want to scare away.
Yes. I'm not sure if we can. I have to double check that. I don't think that's something that we actually. Right.
So we don't scare people. Okay, up and down, we're involved by the maintenance. Purpose it's should be, that's two, two principles.
Yes, and 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 again, it's it's that delegate that we often find. But um, no, I don't think in a policy that we could, we could say that we have an internal candidate. Um, so. We might have competing internal candidates, so that's that's the option. But we have key, we have sensitive confidential.
I know you're aware, you know, just kidding.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, well, and to Ellen's point, you know, it does, it changes the, if if the staff doesn't feel like they can trust the HR department, we have a problem, right? So so it's it's something that I need to focus on every day to make sure that I keep or I earn and keep the trust of of my staff and my teammates.
That's basically well said. That was basically what I was going to bring up, the importance of HR being safe data. Because um, just from standpoint of protecting the town, um, having employees have a place where it's safe and they can talk about it. Sometimes what they're, they think is an issue may not be an issue. But they need to be able to talk to it. And if we, if there is something that's right, you should assume that the town finds out. There's a lots of pretty clear that on knowledge of certain things, if you, you become a person as a requirement to report. If the town doesn't do that, the town, but this is something.
Yes, and there's a lot of, um, so we have all of those types of policies. That specific one I can hear you're pointed to is called a whistleblower policy. Uh, but so we have all of those on the website.
That's why you're the HR.
Yes. And there's also the man who did the reporter. Right. Yes.
I just wanted to talk about classification, classification salaries. It was back in the presentation um on on, I think it was on Facebook. Uh, when it was talking about some of the issues that were, you know, higher, you know, senior director for the senior center here. Uh, there was a comment regarding about what Ducksbury did. Uh, and so I did look into that. So I, uh, what Ducksbury had done, which many towns do, uh, that they had done a a full deep dive survey consultant regarding classifying, codifying all the salaries and and benefits that go into uh the different town positions. So everything on the town side can separate school side, town side. So that would be giving firefighters, police, movement assistance, every every town function on that side was done. Uh, and as a as a part of that, I did talk to the HR director for Ducksbury as well. And the other reason that it was done was due to the Massachusetts Equal Pay Act uh to make, to help the town liability wise, to make sure that they were paying women, you know, same on suspended positions. Uh, so it's sort of foundational analysis that's that's done. And so it goes into the, you know, duties responsible. What they do is they send out a survey, they do a deep dive into every position in town. They end up giving it a rating based on on points of what it, of what it should be. Uh, and they look at the education, part of the survey is the education, the previous work experience. Um, do they use independent judgment? Are they in the policy development? What are the physical demands of the job they're lifting thing and how much? Uh, are they dealing with planning oversight? Are there any hazardous conditions that they're exposed to and the use of technology? So they give that every every job a numerical value rating on it. And then they also look at the comparison with the other towns, which we do do uh on salaries. Uh, but with the other things, not maybe necessarily, uh, they'll take benchmarking of other towns and look at the salaries, health insurance, sick leave, holiday and personal days, vacation longevity, educational incentives, uh clothing and cleaning allowances and any stipends. And from that, they can look at to see where that town is vis a vis the other benchmark towns. So it'd be in 50th percentile, the 80th percentile and and and, you know, so when we put out for a uh an employment position, um, or if we have a new contract coming up, uh, we can see, are we behind the curve or ahead of the curve on that? So uh, one thing that I would add to it is that we would probably want to look at uh to compare the turnover of positions and the length of stay and the openings. I realize there's some positions that are hard to get, such as TPW positions at this point in time. And maybe a few others, so that could be in there as well. But the the whole thing is, is with that information, uh, that would give our HR director and and our town manager the 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 foundational analysis tools to be able to look at, because you can't manage what you can't measure. And so with our, one of our sister towns, only two towns away doing it, uh, if we don't do it, we're behind the curve. And give what they what they put out there for their compensation taxes versus what we do. Uh, so that was one thing that that I had seen. And I I think that would be very helpful uh for us to have this foundational analysis done. And whereas the Ducksbury had already done it, uh, they could use a consultant to do it. They benchmarked 16 towns around us. They have all that information. Uh, so that if we were to be able to do the same type of thing, uh, we, that information is already there. It's not a deeper dive for them to do. They're already, it's already there at the fingertips. So that's my comment on that. I didn't know if you had any comments regarding that. Be looking into, you know, deeper than salaries as to compensation for.
Um, so I can comment on the process. So it is a process that I've been a part of before, um, when I was on the Personnel Committee in Norwell. Something that we did is that the point system went, we're looking at job descriptions and assigned points to different categories. I also recently did it uh just as a volunteer for the um Old Colony Library Network. I went through and worked with their staff to to take a look at their salaries and sign points. Um, so I think my my opinion on it is that we we do this ongoing and not not in a formal way that you're talking about in the sense of hiring an outside consultant. Um, and if that's something that the board is interested in, Tom and Andrew is interested in implementing and having to support it. Um, right now, I don't see any, when I look at, for instance, what Norwell provided us recently for the study that they did, I don't see any grandiose uh red flags. Uh, I think we're we're pretty um on on task regarding um salaries for the most part. Generally, these reports are doing, are done in a response to something that's happening in the town. So just for example, uh, Norwell was having trouble with a lot of employees going to other camps, uh, which indicated to them that there maybe was a a salary issue and and the less. So that's why they took a look at their, um, did a did a large study. Um, I don't see any red flags here, however, it's always something that we could do should should the board and Tommy contribute.
So that's pretty, that's what that.
From Norwell?
Yeah. Offering higher salary. It happens when the choice of personnel counts and like any company.
Yeah. Sure.
That's what I think.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, Norwell just uh essentially wasn't uh offering competitive salaries. And so and and, you know, cost was a benefit to that in some instances, right? So but they they wanted to stop that revolving war. And so they were in hopes of, you know, not having their employees coached so easily.
Ross, if you may, I say that should be by engaging employees, creating new staff. People won't look. So that's just going to be.
There's, there's a lot of studies out there that say it's not.
In fact, just to answer David's question too, so with the Pankrata went into effect, we actually did do something. We had a offer and and do a top to bottom analysis. So we were okay. So there were a couple of places we had to give, think of, and refine. So we don't have a very big workforce right now. And this is, it actually turns out a large of our relationship has been well. So we're actually in a very balanced, you know, to expand. Uh, but it is something we can look at because positions change as you guys. Uh, even though works, we actually had some train through a land ramp, Bush train, but the state with the cushion. So we have our own Bush trainer house because it's just, you need to be responsible. It's something we try to be on top of. And at the same time, I I don't have any interest in studying. So we get to the spring, you know, we don't have any money right now. But if we say, maybe we need to look at it, I'm happy to approach it. I like us to fund this.
So Jack, give one more comment and then I'd like to wrap this up because work comes behind this. Thank you.
Uh, to uh, to just add on to Chris, what you just uh said, which is very insightful. Part of the things it would be helpful to, on Blackboard and also citizens to understand is the structure of how it all comes together and who does what and where and departments and staffing and all that. And I get a lot of questions. And I get a lot of questions. Questions and we can, if you answer the questions or you haven't put out that, all of that drama way.
Right.
And I think we have enough drama to have, let's try to see if we can.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think Chris's idea makes sense and figuring out a way to get it done. And I don't know if these are expensive. David, these, these cost a lot?
Yes, very expensive.
I was going to say, there's no, uh, Ducksbury, I think you did for 37,000 to do it. And it could have gone up to 50, but they provided some information to drop. Like, of course, with the figures that they already have, where they're going to take for them that, that might, you know, bring it the same or lower than what they're, what we have now. But I would say one last thing I would want is that with the equal pay act, um, you know, that's wonderful that they did it back then. But I would say that if we ever went into that or, or got a loss from it. Um, if we did a study like this, I would feel very comfortable with the town's position of where we're going to stand defensively on something like that. Uh, because you've codified every position properly. And you have an objective analysis of how you come up with that. Um, and just saying, yeah, if the same or better salaries someone else, if on a, a particular spreadsheet or something. I, I don't think it's going to do us well. I think that, um, we really need to dig down and at least have the foundational analysis for what we're paying and why. And then also the benefits of it all. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
I, I don't want to leave the impression that it's a dub either. It's not just the salaries for sure. Not understanding the position is, it's the same with dogs. And positions change over time. Position becomes greatly more responsible. And that's what Payback recently did to the cycle. Because it wasn't just equal jobs, you know, it was comparative. I actually think the Payback that gives a comparative position, you had to look at position A and position B. And, and to the classics, they have a hot sentence, because everybody knows it in, in this world. It's janitors and the folks who lunch. The, the folks who lunch at the schools tend to, what, send a 70 minutes, not always. So it is, it's been a disturbing, a pain experience. And arguably, this position of that similar, potentially, are, you know, different than not, the category. For similar, the people start with that. So that's something the schools want. And when we, we have quite similar positions at the same time, it's something we always have to look at. So I get, you're right there. It's much more of a depth.
Kevin, do we have any questions now?
The only thing is we can speak in the microphone a little bit more.
Okay.
Thank you.
All, all of us or anyone?
Both.
Everybody. Okay. All right, um. Can you hear me in the background? Thank you. Thank you, Cory. Uh, Megan, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, having done a lot of benchmarking when I was on the school committee, I understand the value of what David was talking about. And I, I think that, um, you were probably collecting the, the data. You know, as Chris has indicated, you know, with each search that go, that goes on. And, and I think probably for, for the town's sake, codifying it in a singular kind of location, whether it's a folder. Or, or something would be, would be beneficial. I, if I recall correctly, in the new website, you're going to have an organizational chart.
Yes.
Correct. And on each position in the chart, you said you could click on it and see the job description?
Yes.
Okay. So I think, um, I think that's like great, great. And we haven't seen that. We have gotten requests for work charts. Um, I'd like to thank you for all the work you've done in the last six months. And we look forward to, you know, continued, uh, work in progress, you know, free. You know, we don't want to inundate you too much coming in to speak to us, but we want to hear about, you know, things that are happening. That are exciting or progress to be in on some of the issues that, um, the, uh, issues, but, but objectives that the board has looked for. Um, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
Thanks.
Okay, next up we have, uh, Mr. Cory Evans, who is our MBTA Advisory Representative. Thank you, Cory.
Good evening, everybody. I will be as quick as possible to move to the mic and explain how these things go. So for the last two years, I've been serving as Cohasset's designee, the MBTA Advisory Board, Cohasset as a seat on the MBTA Advisory Board because we have training. Uh, so tonight I've got three things for you, a general budget update for the TA, uh, update on ferry and talk a little bit about what. Um, so, uh, first thing we will do is. The biggest update from the advisory board on the MBTA side is upcoming fiscal cliff. We'll see that, um, in the big red letters. The, the deficit that's going to start next year is five times larger than what was faced during COVID. And if you remember during COVID, uh, some of the proposed draconian cuts were to basically cut green. Commuter rail repressurization completely and eliminate the ferry. Um, thanks to the efforts of a bunch of community members, we saved the ferry. And, um, the commuter rail was on a significantly reduced service. But so far there's no answer to this. Uh, there's no clear, uh, plan about how to make up the budget shortfall or how to, what the cuts will look like. So this is something that the advisory committee and itself obviously, uh, actively monitoring because it affects our community. Um, especially the ferry, the ferry now has ridership, which is, in some, some months recently exceeded. And that was something which our community relies on. The ferry is a huge part of what's going. So, um, that's the first thing to do. The second thing is on the South Shore Ferry. Um, on the good news side, the, um. The MBTA has appointed the first ever Director of Ferry Operations, a gentleman named David Perry. Uh, just page one, that one. Yep. Um, which is great. So now we have an internal advocate who's talking, who's looking at routes, who's looking at scheduling, looking at the issues. One of the issues that does pop up when I commute is that there are people that are left on the dock. There's not enough seats on the boat. Uh, and that's something which, um, you know, if you try to get a ferry and it's not on the ferry for another hour, it's a problem. Uh, so that's one of the challenges he's tasked with facing. And he will be in our contact mode for, as we deal with the budget, budgetary issues as well. Um, so let's scroll down to page nine. The MBTA has also, on the ferry side, a bunch of the vessels that we've all taken have, are either brand new or being renovated at the current time. Uh, there's two new, two new vessels that came up, two new fast ferries, uh, the larger ferry as well. So, uh, the MBTA is making investments in the ferry, which is great to see, and we hope that those continue. Scroll down to 10. That's just the ridership chart that I referenced earlier. Again, ridership of the ferry is really beating, uh, the system wide averages for, for, uh, post code, pre, pre code, post code. Uh, page 19. By the thing, if you've been taking the England ferry, you notice there's a lot of work being done to the ferry dock. The dock was in terrible shape and, um, this has been ongoing, continued to be ongoing. Page 20. And then actually there's going to be a new, uh, this just, this just got announced, there'll be a new ferry dock, um, Quincy. So the, uh, research is going to be how Quincy, um, ferry boat will work. Um, obviously those things are going to be part of a study. Everything is studied 15 times. Uh, there'll be a study about, uh, the whole system, um, next year. All right, um, scroll shot if you. Want to share this with everybody. This is pretty cool. Uh, this is the, the Lightning. Which, if you've taken the ferry, yep, so, yeah. So this boat went into Bridgeport, Connecticut for a full refurbishment. And it was actually determined that the top, even though it's all aluminum, it's too much corrosion. So they're going to scrap the top, but the hull is fine. They're just going to rebuild the whole top of that boat and put it on the hull. And, you know, that's a couple of years out, but that's a, we've gone out there a bunch of times. So that boat will be returning to us eventually after it gets all refurbished, it's all nice and new. All right. And then finally, uh, the appointment. So I've been serving, as I said, as the, uh, designee. According to the MBTA, uh, advisory bylaws. The, every town has a seat and that seat goes to the CEO of the mayor or the chair of the select. Um, however, any resident of that community can serve as a designee. Um, and so going forward, um, now we have a new chair. Question is, would I like to continue with this role? As I said, I, you know, go to all the meetings and go to meeting on electrification subcommittee and the ferry subcommittee. The electrification subcommittee is looking at, um, one day electrifying repressurization. But that's, you know, ways out. So if you could scroll to page five of the bylaws. Yep, just, uh, section D, uh, B there, designee, just states that the municipal CEO can appoint a designee. Certainly. So that's the express version. Any questions? Happy to just push that as you want. It's pretty helpful. Yes, sir. If you want to continue, yes, sir. I find it interesting.
Second question, um, would it help you to do your job, assuming that you are. Which I would, in, unless our chair wants to take on, uh, bank staffs. Um, would it be helpful for the board to send a letter weighing in on importance to our community of the ferry?
So, um, luckily our Red Moschino, uh, actually has a ferry group we met today. Um, we met again with, with the director of ferry operations. Uh, a lot of representations from Hingham, from Paul. Uh, I can, any of you guys in on that working group, that group has really been kind of the, the main advocacy group for our towns when it comes to, to ferry service.
But if you were to, I'm, I'm sorry, if we work as a board to, uh, we can't get time to stomach and send a letter. In support, would that make your job easier?
Anytime the board wants to support something, that's great. So, yeah, if the, the ferry was important to you back then, if that's, continues to be important, then every word that says that is, it's good.
Thank you.
Give it anything?
Dealing with the MBTA is a whole different kind of fish, so to speak, you know. How it's been with them and I, I remember, I think, a lot of people that try to take away the ferry service, uh, how damaging that would be. Uh, to not only the class of residents, but the South Shore in general. People get to Boston in a timely manner. So I guess I would say, I mean, I, I personally take the ferry, I go into Boston and I, I say it was five years back in my life. As opposed to sitting in traffic, um, trying to get there. And as we all know, the traffic getting into Boston, uh, it, it doesn't matter what time you leave or what time you, you go home. It's, it's the same. Uh, but I would ask, uh, with, so people know, how can they get in contact with you? If they change the commuter rail, if they take the ferry, if they want to, you know, pipe in or, or comment or anything. But where can they get a hold of you to talk to?
Uh, yeah, anytime that, any of the board members here get a message about something with the, with the, you know, commuter rail, ferry. Obviously, you can send my email anytime you want. Uh, as the advisory board, we, it's kind of a top level. Um, our access to kind of day to day operations is limited. But, you know, I can always, I always will be real good with the director or the, uh, the director of the advisory board, Brian Kane. Is really, really good at kind of figuring out what the problems are. And the ferry, to your point, David, what we found out was it was the most on time service and it had some of the highest fare recovery. So it passed the East, you know, and so, and it was so kind of jarring that was the thing, it was tough, it's such a.
I mean, it's, it's a long talk about why they even looked at that, but that's a. Uh, I mean, when you look obviously to the East, that's all there is ocean on, on Boston. So to be able to use that resource and get people moving in and out of Boston is, uh, is crucial. But I would say that any voice, uh, that you can pick up, whether it's email or whatever, that, you know, wants to tie in for the board to eventually come up with a letter. I think every voice helps, uh, and everything you add a bit about voices that actually save the family, uh, just television. So, but thank you for your comments.
Thanks. So I, I have a question. Um, you know, we, on, on one of the first slides, we already talked about the budget deficit five times the current, around 142 million. It's 720,000 dollars or something, if I did my math correctly. And I'm sure they've done, they've done the exercise of where fares would have to go to help cut that deficit. And if they did, is the number they got to on fare pricing, like, unreasonable?
So. I'm, I'm not, um, part of the budgetary committee, so, so I've got a high level understanding.
Okay.
But fares are a very small part of the TB budget, like, very small. So fares, the big gap is funding that comes to yourself. Um, so that's where the, the funding has typically come from, not from fares. Fares is, I don't know if it's even third or 20%, it's very, very low. As, and when it comes to the overall, overall budget. So it's, they're way more.
And are they, yeah.
We're covered.
Yeah.
So it's like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Looking.
Yeah. Right. However, they seem to be making investments in the ferry with the dock. So.
Some of those were part of a capital plan, the CIP that comes out and is a little bit different bucket. So those, uh, will continue, but the operations are, are really a problem. So the CIP is a, a different bucket that, that is funded through different things.
Okay.
You know, but I think, you know, David alluded to it and, you know, not to speculate because it's not what we do. But, you know, there's, there's a bigger conversation about why we are here and we're returning now. So people did want to.
Yeah, so, um, you can be reached also on direct email, c@cohassementa.org.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So I get your email.
I think, yes, yes, one more.
Last question was, um, I know there's a lot of people at home who commute to possibly the ferry. Do you have any information, is there going to be talk getting, uh, they will have a stop at South Boston? Especially in the Seaport District, uh, because the only one, you know, rose fourth at this point. Uh, and so I know, is there any update regarding that?
Uh, I don't have one, but I'll jump to, to the new director of operations and see if, see what's set. Yeah, thank you.
So, um, at, at this point, to, to answer Mr. Gray's question, no, I do not want to, um, assume my seat on the advisory committee for the MBTA. Um. At, at this point in time. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cory Evans as the MBTA designee for town.
Back to you, sir.
Well, I, I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you, Cory. And if something comes up, Cory, in the meantime, like, like something very dramatic that you think we need to know, just give me a buzz and we'll get it on, on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So next up, um, the sidewalk safety connectivity committee, either all three appointments, um, they have all applied. Um, Justin Perry, Julie Rollins, Paul Brady, Tori Hannah, Frank Chiketti. And Brian Joyce is the non-voting TPW rep, all go on your term. Do I have a motion to reappoint all of those people?
So.
So I have a second. Mr. Pluck's seconded, Mr. Gray made a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, next up is Open Space Recreation Committee appointments and, and additional members. Did we vote for this last meeting to create two, no, please, no. So we have two things. We have to appoint and then we have to vote to approve two associate members. Okay. So first we'll deal with the reappointments. Um, Marissa Manley, Deidre Riley, Connie Ashar are all looking for reappointments for three year terms. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Sanji Fernando, uh, is looking to be appointed as the Conservation Commission rep.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Burge Schmidt Leish, did I say that? Probably I apologize if I, um, mispronounced the name. Um, is looking to be appointed as a planning board rep. Do I have a motion? Mr. Gray, you have a second?
Second.
Rock, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, um, we need to discuss the associate membership. Uh, Chris had sent out a memo, a memo as part of our packet. Um. Indicating that, you know, the open space plan, um, there'll be a new one forthcoming after 2026. We heard from the Open Space Recreation Commission, last meeting of, of the need that they feel they have for two associate members. Um, and we have, uh, as Chris has indicated, you know, we have created associate member positions on other boards. Um, and. Um, and, uh, I would like to entertain conversation from anybody who would like to comment about this request. Mr. Gray, you have a question?
Something to explain why they need such an archway. I'll go back to the wall. Now, I don't see, I, I'd like to see. Actually, I think that it's that. I have to say that, you know, just, it's something we do, but I'm gonna get my shell, Chris. So I'm, I'm just curious. I don't mind pointing any board if we need to, to, why they need to survive. So during, uh, the, the recreation of the plan, there's a lot of public comment sessions, there's a lot where typically brings it small, some companies do it, so if they're gonna need members the next year, we can, uh, for that, we can have some extra. In fact, the manual change, you know, it's a long one. Um, and it's a, it wasn't set, it's set number, we're talking about creating subcommittees, two, three, interesting subcommittee. I don't think, you know, Cross is not that big, really, thanks for allowing this study failure. I mean, I said, I think their desire is to have another couple of audience that would be, that are committed to helping with this thing. Cause that'll, right, it's kind of a fall, if, if they, they spend one, two, five new, you can, those issues, you know, space, reservation, trails. I, again, this is their, this is their request.
Yeah. And, and the, the work of the plan is quite extensive. It's three hundred pages. It's, you know, compilation of surveys. Um, I, I appreciate the concept of subcommittee work, I concur. Um, and where we've had committees, uh, request reductions in how many members, we're gonna be in a hard time. Um, it, it's kind of refreshing to have more people interested and engaged. And then perhaps the expectations can be raised a little bit higher of the committee so that, because they have more hands on deck to fill higher expectations. Mr. Plax?
Uh, process question. If we end up in a situation two years from now where the committee says, you know what, we're having to refill these entries, we're like, who needs? How hard or easy is that to do?
It's, it's as easy as it was for us, trust, I'm actually for about three, just reduced a number. Um, there, there's no statutory limits. Um, you have to have a plan every several years. You're not gonna have that committee on a regular basis. The reason it stayed together this time was just the goal was to advocate for plans, a fracturation, um, and not, so it could very well be first of all, you know, you were to, you're trying to, it's definitely something.
Mr. Gray?
Yeah, uh, you, you write, uh, Chris, Chris, the, you want the ability, the knowledge that you can bring it back from a smaller level if needed. I think part of the issue when some of these more technical parts, it takes a while to be an associate before you get up to speed. I know in conservation, you really need a year, ideally two or three years as an associate before you have the indemnity knowledge to make those types of decisions. So and especially if they need it, I'd be very much in favor of it.
Kevin, that any comments? No? Please, one for the audience? Do you have further selective comments? No? Okay. So may I have a motion to add two associate members to the open space and recreation commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we just created two positions. Um, I would like a motion, um, to approve uh, for appointment as associate members, Jason Kukla and Virginia Leclair. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next up is examining bylaw update from Katie Glassmeyer.
Um, do I know? It's still, so thank you for coming. Thank you for inviting, uh, any board. I'm here as a, uh, servant of the board. Tom Callahan, speaking very deserved vacation. And I am going to apply a very quick overview of where we're at. Um, I know that the board and Tom has come forward.
Might need to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Um, I'm the same here. We say that people think that's rude. Um, so Tom has actually spoken here before about the first, um, uh, set of bylaw revisions that we have gone through and we have discussed. And I mean, essentially, uh, we are in the process of revising based on any kind of commentary that we've gotten. Most of the kind of commentary is based on details that need what we're proposing, how we're saying it, with what the state's uh, language and what they assume to be correct practice description. Uh, what I, I'm here to, I need to talk about are some of the changes that we are, um, working on that are uh, either new or substantially revised. And I'm gonna deal with the substantially revised ones to begin with. So substantially revised ones are in reaction to changes that are predominantly based on state practice. So for example, um, the first three that I would discuss are reform of an energy bylaw, reform of the solar energy bylaw, and reform of floodplain, flood, district bylaw. All three of those have had changes made to them on a state basis. We are incorporating changes from that, uh, source and we're making, uh, adjustments based into the asset. Uh, but the kinds of changes that we're making are, I wouldn't say cosmetic, but they are, um, much less substantial states, so to say, it's attempting to bring these three, um, bylaws, which maybe cities and, and small towns have, uh, um, into conformance with a standard. And, um, uh, we are in the process of still, uh, perfecting our language because the language at the state level doesn't sort of fit our size place and the problem of what type of, um, uh, technology would be applied. So for example, basically with energy, we're obviously not gonna have coastal energy likely in the near future in, in terms of solar. Commercial-grade solar at a scale that take over many acres of land. Um, and, uh, in the case of the floodplain of the remaining district, that has been totally revised by the state on the basis of analysis related to climate change and, um, storm surge, uh, and sea level rise. So those three are pretty, pretty much being revised on the basis of what the state is telling us and what we are, and how we fit into the categories of the state's evolving. Um, the, so that's one, two, and three. And, uh, uh, when we get a, a completed uh, set of documents, so you go through the language in a systematic way, which we're hoping to be in the next, uh, two weeks, um, you will receive physical copies. So then, so that's the first three. So then we have four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. These are more directed specifically to us and to our community. So we have a land alteration bylaw, originally created uh, in nineteen, in the late nineteen, or in the early nineteen nineties. And, uh, it has evolved over time. We're making further changes to it to try to address some of the impacts of, uh, extraction of ledge and changes in the landscape overall. And, um, it is going to be a more elaborate discussion than the current model. Current model is very modest in what it's requesting and therefore has the added problem of the relatively weak in terms of what we're concerned about. And the concern is really that the total transformation of landscape, which there's a strong sentiment in the community that, uh, the recent large impact projects are, people are sending messages about the fact that this is not how it sounds like and the, and the and we don't really have any regulation to control certain aspects of scale. So that would come in and it would be something you have, um, you have to look at carefully and it's going to be something that there is itching me. It's not gonna be, uh, something picked up out of the book and put it on the hard paper. Um, the big change is something called development impact. So the last product, the last properties in Cohasset that are available for development are typically unusual in either size, location, or scale. And, um, there be, and more and more of what's left is being, it's, it's being, um, uh, insinuated into communities that are already fully developed. So we're seeing houses being taken down, houses being put up. And in that process, uh, it's not just what happens to the landscape where the house is going to change. It's actually on the infrastructure that has significant consequences. For example, water, sewer, roads, drainage, all of the things that are the side effects of very heavy equipment and very, uh, large changes in the landscape. So what we're doing is we're not creating, um, really a totally new conceptual picture. What we're doing is using all of the characteristics of our protections that already exists in our existing, uh, land use regulations to condition practices that are otherwise right now. Uh, we basically have no control over and we also don't have any means of recourse when a, uh, one neighborhood has six new houses, um, blasting and all new water and sewer pipes, which basically in the absence of having some sort of control about what happens afterward, you end up with roads that are torn out and you end up with bad drainage. So we try to regulate it from the standpoint of existing practices rather than coming up with new ones. And that was the advice of our mayor. Next one is, um, uh, auxiliary dwelling unit. Uh, we have established a set of conditions that are, uh, going to enable the prospect of an ADU to be built within the confines of a set of land use regulations. Um, there'll be one, there will be four, and, uh, we are working on the process of figuring out just exactly how much, uh, could be done under what circumstances and what setting. So we're still in the process of formulating that one. The next one is to consider the issue going back again to what's left in Cohasset for development, what's left in Cohasset for development is by and large unusual pieces of land that have not been developed in the past, either because of their physical feature or because of their scale. In the case of their scale, we have, um, places which are substantially above our average size lot. And, uh, when that occurs, the question becomes, how big can, how big can you put? What, what size of a structure can you put on a piece of property? And again, we have three, uh, scale zones. And they are basically treated the same on a proportional basis. What that means is that if, if a house, uh, a twenty thousand square foot lot can, um, put a structure on, on the basis of to seventeen percent of the, the actual lot area, that same number seventeen is carried on through the size of the three different residential scale units. Well, the, the challenge is that if you were thinking about something that is, um, twenty thousand square feet, thirty-five thousand square feet, and then you have something seventy-five thousand square feet or more, that, that number gets you a potential of a very, very large structure. Because the number doesn't change on the basis of how large the property is. And we have a couple of examples that have just come before us where you can see that it's going to be, if you took down the wall, see a very, very large residential unit. And it's out of character with nothing else around it. So we're trying to find a midway solution so that we don't end up with this, this, this all around itself. Cause actually there's no amount of value that we're gonna give them at when you end up with high variation in, um, changes in, in the use over a piece of property over time. Research and academia indicates that there's, that you think the red people around you are getting actually valued. Large structures being built. The answer is it doesn't. There's no evidence. Maybe it does, but the evidence doesn't exist. So we're working on that one. That will come to you probably in another meeting, maybe that is Calvin, Tom, or the other. Um, and that, that also includes not only the floor area ratio question, but also the front the, um, uh, with requirements. And then finally, the residential cluster law. This is a law that's been on the books for a very long time. Last time we met as a board, we didn't get a chance to actually discuss how that was going to be modified relative to what we know today. It's something that's existed in the past and we certainly know how to upgrade it from the standpoint of time because things have changed. And, um, in every way, uh, we need to modernize it. And then there is, well, and then there is also one last one, but I don't have very much to say about it. And that is housekeeping. That is related to language that's being requested of us. Why would we choose it? Related to the CBA, but I can't really say anymore because we really haven't got to that one.
Anyone have any questions? Yes.
Um, really interesting one, you know, as it comes forward regarding the mitigation for, in that mitigation bylaw. That's something that was, that kicked over from the last zoning minutes that we had done, uh, last few years. So hopefully, uh, with all these, you know, they can all be capacitized, uh, from what the, you know, current state wants. So that was the one I was looking at the most. Cause I think it's not necessarily residential, commercial development. Uh, where we do allow a free A of other places, uh, that I think are very, we're going for. So that's looking at.
We are in particular, uh, also very sensitive to that because as an example, the, um, storage facility three A, which needs its lights on all night long, which being over into the residential development across the country. Um, I, nobody really thought about that. But now we have to really think about that because it has huge impacts for people. And, um, so I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, I've also worked on this for a very, actually for a very long period of time, going back to my days. I'm, I'm very exhausted on anything. Mitigation is very important. We don't really, we don't do with mitigation, which we follow means. If somebody puts up a big project, the developer has to mitigate the impact of that project. And I'm oversimplifying it, but we didn't have the ability to do that. This is a step, and it gives a community a lot of work and all. And it says, like, if you're gonna do all this stuff, you know, it's impact on the community and you have to help mitigate that.
I will say that I, our, our lawyer, Carolyn Murray, has been really, uh, stood to him getting us to this point. Cause originally we thought we would have to somehow create new regulations. But what she did was to go into the body of our bylaws and find the access points where we could use the language that we already have so that it will make it a lot more likely to be able to pass. I tell me.
Just for a minute, if I said this to Tom, he would something at me, but this is a lot.
I'm
I would encourage you to talk to the planning board about whether or not they can get all ten of them at the same time. You can break one record.
So that's a really good question. We, we ourselves have gone back and forth about this. And I would say when, once we get these fully formed, we will come back to that question because we don't want to see this yet. And we also feel that at least in these, some of these, they're technically complex. Figuring out, you know, what's the difference between size of a lot and blocks of a lot. And if we had three dimensional uh, tools to be able to demonstrate what it would look like, that'd be one thing, but we don't have those tools. So I will convey that to Tom and I know we're all. So that's
Yes, and I would second what Chris has to say, having been on this committee for a number of years and another number of different implementations. That's the real tactical political thing is what gets passed and when. And it doesn't have to be done all at once and frequently. We want to make sure that we have something that's digestible. Cause worst thing that can happen is you put something on and other things on and there's a poison pill and that kills the whole group. So I'm, we have time to do it. Digestible stuff must
Yeah, and I think we all agree that it's going for, going for progress actually.
Well, that's hard to get though.
Okay, so we'll hear your phenomenon. So I, I hope, go ahead. I was the last. So um, you had mentioned that the actual bylaws might be available in a couple of weeks. Chris, we had technically scheduled next Tuesday, we presume to review, but I'm not sure if we're going to have.
So, so I will say, I'm saying that without knowing that that date is the date you're looking at. And if you are negotiating that with Tom, then that's what our target. That's a week of time. He's just not here. Right? We might have done more elaborate.
You, you, you scheduled to meet tomorrow.
That's correct.
When you, you have required tomorrow. So if you don't, then maybe, you know.
We have, we have one really big project to review tomorrow. That will take probably half our meeting, but um, some of these are more clearly defined and the language is almost completed. Some of them are not. So I would say there's a good chance that uh, tomorrow night, these will be firmer and that will tell you that that there isn't any, I don't have any understanding that we're going to postpone further in the picture that the actual subject completed.
Okay, so we've got till Friday to post, right? So if you would be so kind as to, to coordinate, Chris, what you have ready? I mean, it's okay for us to spend an hour reviewing for our, you know, articles, things that are ready. It doesn't have to be delivered to us in a whole package. That to my colleagues, I did send out a request for availability on the twenty fourth of Zoom um, at six o'clock. Mr. Brady affirmed, Mr. Pluck's affirmed, the heart stopped six thirty, and I haven't heard from Mr. Farag's available. Mr. Crater, are you available?
I, I got it.
Okay, well, we have, we would have a forum. So if you feel you have materials that are ready for us to review and provide feedback, um, we're happy to look at it next Tuesday. So just coordinate with us.
Yeah, I think that um, the uh, uh, so if, one of the things that sort of drew us for a coup is that these changes at the state level, we have to respond to them. It's not, they're not just small changes. They are substantial changes. So hopefully our lawyer will decision to think that they at least approve these because these are no brainers, right? These are laws. We have to decide why, why, whether or not we should.
Yeah, just another sweet, it, it, the clock gets very tight on total. We basically have thirty eight days to get this all done.
Yeah, yeah, we're aiming for that. It's kind of like a group of all.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. All right. So we're all set on Tuesday. Chris will let us know by Friday. If there's anything for us to review. Um, Tuesday night at six on Zoom. Okay. Um, next update, Safe Harbor opioid abatement funds, standing project for the week. Dave?
Nicole, sir.
Both.
Hello.
Nicole, thank you for waiting.
Of course. Thank you for having me tonight. I will make it um, as short as possible. I'm just going to pull up my presentation. All right, I should be able to share. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this evening I just wanted to um, give an, an update. We said we would do it about quarterly, um, where we're at with our abatement funds. Um, so just a recap for those at home. Um, we, I should also mention I'm the program director of Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition. Um, and I'm part of the opioid abatement committee that we've put together here in Cohasset. So a recap is that every municipality in Massachusetts has received opioid abatement funds. Um, the amount that every municipality receives is different. It depends on the community. And it depends on the settlement, which you'll see in um, a spreadsheet that we have. And it will also vary year by year. So a lot of the settlement funds are given um, in large sum in, in the first year and then it seems to really trickle down and, and vary year to year from then on. Um, we're not sure how long it will be. It could be ten years. It could be twenty years. Um, it, a lot of it is still up for determination, but um, it was, this all comes from the opioid manufacturers and how they use unfair um, decision making and promoting when it comes to prescription opioids. Um, and that's where we've resulted in the opioid epidemic that, that we're seeing today. So these abatement funds are are hopefully um, being used by municipalities to fill the gaps within every given community. Um, so I gave an update back in, I believe, April, May it was. Um, and since then, we have received a, a lot more funds. Um, so the subtotal for this given day is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in Cohasset. Um, and again, this was a large sum um, dispersed throughout the first, I would say two to three years. Um, and it's going to vary year to year from here on out. Um, the, the abatement funds do have requirements. Um, so they do have to be used in a way that um, is preventing misuse of opioids, harm reduction tactics, um, connections to care. So again, I, I won't list them all. They're, they're listed here for everyone to read, but it's um, essentially assessing each community where they're at and what are the gaps? Where can these funds be utilized to um, really prevent opioid use from reoccurring with our younger generations and then also helping those who are currently struggling with addiction. Um, you know, providing care to treatment or um, filling any gap need that exists. So our committee again, um, consists of Pam Fahey, Joan Taverna, Stephanie Saunders, myself, Emily Ludwig, who is our project coordinator here at Safe Harbor. Um, Officer Wilson, Jack Hernan, Mike Duggan of Evoque, Kristen Essen, who is part East Coast, part South Shore Peer Recovery in Weymouth, um, Kurt Gerald and Anne Marie Wilton. And so when this committee started getting together, we came up, I had mentioned this at our last update, the strategies that we've come up with as a committee and, and from the information that we've gathered from the community, um, and the funds have been, they're in four different categories. So there's prevention team, prevention kits, monetary aid and education. So I just wanted to run through quickly on where we're at, how, how we've utilized the funds thus far since the last update. Um, our prevention team consists of um, the police department, our social services with Stephanie Saunders and um, her staff. And then also our parent advisor, Anne Marie and Kurt Gerald, who's our recovery coach. Um, and they, just in the past few weeks, they service two individuals. Um, it's rarely case by case, but those individuals listed, Stephanie and, and the parent advisor and Kurt, um, they get referrals um, from community members, from the police. They meet monthly for um, to discuss these referrals, to process how to proceed. And um, we do think that it's, so far, it's been a great service to Cohasset and just um, either helping individuals who are leaving detox and, and um, providing care to get them into continued services, or if there is a parent who has um, a struggling child at home. Um, we've had parents that have really benefited from speaking with Anne Marie, who's, who's had almost two decades of lived experience and, and working with insurance and, and the steps should they go to ATS or CSS or, or whatnot, just to have um, that guiding shoulder to, to help them through the process with their child. And we do hope to utilize this prevention team um, to expand the services and increasing utilization with our younger families. So um, Stephanie's in the works of meeting with the superintendent and the director of student services. She's already had the meeting, so it's, it's just um, getting, getting the logistics together. Um, our prevention kits, they include Narcan, fentanyl strips, gloves, barrier masks. Our resource, resource brochure, which includes all this information and more um, in a sharps container. They're in a, a nice little kit that we got um, with the um, the information from Board of Health and Safe Harbor. And we launched it June tenth. Since then, um, we've already provided over two hundred and eighty kits to date. Um, and there are, there are five baskets. So there are two bathrooms in the Paul Pratt Memorial Library. And um, those are really the ones that we cannot keep up with the demand. It's, they're going, going, going. Um, there's a basket in the town hall lobby, which is also um, we seem to have to restock at least once a week, Wilka Commons Lobby and then the, the police station lobby. Um, so just like I said, since June tenth, we've provided over two hundred and eighty of these kits. And we're, we're continuously restocking. So we do feel like this is a need. Um, there is a sign on the baskets because sometimes the demand is more than what we're able to keep up with. There's a sign on there. If someone is to see the basket empty, they know who to contact in case they, they need Narcan sooner than we are able to restock those baskets. Um, the monetary aid piece to date, there have been no applications received. I've had conversations with um, a few co- community members who are um, interested in applying. But we are hoping to relaunch this information. I really would, I would love the support of the select board to, to push this information out to the community. Um, that we do have a scholarship for those who either go to detox or residential treatment and are looking to so, go to sober living and they just can't afford it. A lot of the sober living is cash or um, just a, a large amount of money that's not covered by insurance. And that's what the scholarship is for. It's to get the continued um, journey of recovery. That's where we see a lot of failed um, continued recovery. We, that's where we see a lot of relapses occurring because they weren't able to continue from residential treatment. We're really trying to um, increase the success rates of those who are struggling with addiction. Um, and then we also have stipends or scholarships for family therapy. So for those who have a loved one who's struggling with addiction, there's, there's a stipend to um, cover the, the therapy that those individuals need themselves. So it's, you're watching a loved one struggle with addiction. It's a lot to process yourselves. A lot of family members go on to get therapy to process it, but they're not able to cover it. Their insurance doesn't cover it. Um, or the therapy therapist who is available does not take insurance. So it's, it's cash, um, whatever the situation may be. We have funds set aside for this. I don't know if it hasn't been utilized so far because there is a feeling of um, putting your name on the application. And I just wanted to put it out there to the community that this is processed through recovered souls. That is who we go through. They handle every single application. We never see the name. No one in the town that works for the town would see who is applying for these applications. We are just getting the numbers. We'll see that someone has applied. They are being utilized. That's all we're hoping for. Um, so I really just want to squash any type of fear of stigma or feeling like you're putting your name out there and because it is a small community, that's not the case. We'll never know who is applying. We're just, we'll know that it is a Cohasset member because recovered souls will let us know in their reports. Um, so we're hoping to relaunch that now that it's fall, now that summer has, I know we still technically have four days left or five days left of summer, but it has passed and um, we see fall to be um, a season where a lot of people start to, you know, they've been able to kind of distract and avoid any type of um, situations that they're going through. And we see fall to be the season where it, a lot of people are facing it head on again. Um, so we'll get that information out to the community. So I would love for the select board to also get that information out to community members. It is available and that's why we put it out there. Um, and then the last piece is the education section. So um, this was really focused on prevention. We have Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition, which is our prevention arm in Cohasset. Um, and we are planning to designate thirty thousand dollars annually of that sum that you saw for FY twenty five, FY twenty six and FY twenty seven to supplement the Safe Harbor staff. Um, for the past seven plus years, it has been a one full-time staff person, which is myself. And then a part-time um, project coordinator. And we've never had two full-time staff. There are so many avenues and programs and initiatives and resources that we can be doing in terms of prevention, um, and also hitting the gamut of all ages on, under eighteen. Right now, we're focused on ages twelve to seventeen. Um, so having two full-time staff members instead of one point five will just increase the amount of um, resources we're able to get out into the community. And hopefully we continue to see a decrease in our percentages of underage substance use. Um, so the full-time project coordinator would fill, fill the gap that currently exists within our, our prevention efforts here in Cohasset. Um, and then I lastly, I just put on this one slide so that people are aware of what the family therapy scholarships cover, what they're aimed for, and then also those housing scholarships for sober living, as I mentioned. This is all on the Safe Harbor website. It's on the um, town website. If you go to safeharborcohasset.org and you go under the resources tab, you will find this information and you can click there and apply right away. I believe that's, yep, that's the end of my update. Is there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? No. Nicole, thank you so much for the ongoing great work you do uh, with Safe Harbor. Um, it's, you know, this is not Cohasset, but we, we all know that so much can happen in our little slice of heaven here and that people are struggling and suffering and the support you and your team by um, is very much appreciated.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um, Chris, do we need to, we don't need to vote to approve to move that point five position to one point O?
Uh, no, you, you don't have to because some grants.
Yeah.
Okay, what you want, you can. From it, I'm going to expect also take no oppositions.
I, I, it, it's up to the board. I mean, if we don't have to, I don't see that we have to. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Chris, I don't know in your weekly update, can I be able to highlight that um, recovered souls that in the mini um, vision? You know, you could say. You know, you could say. Or Kevin. Yeah, you just helped get it out there. Okay, thank you, all right, next up, um, asset management update, um, if you already enjoyed it. Have we got Brian here in person then?
Uh, so yes, just me tonight, um, that's presentation.
Okay.
So thank you for your time, um.
Thank you for waiting.
No problem, uh, the uh, so uh. As far as asset management, um, wasn't, you know, we we that previously before, and uh, so I'm just gonna talk about so many. More recent projects and ongoing projects that we're going on, some projects that are. So we had DPW water sewer facilities, uh, DPW, some slides on road paving. Centenary upgrades, some drainage improvements, and uh, CZM grants, another couple of CZM grants that. Leated, uh, this CZM applied for. And it's uh, if you've seen the presentations of those uh, in current public. Uh, water, uh, some long-term capital planning, water mains, treatment systems. Uh, sludge will do an RFP that's going to the street this next month. An MWRA study that is. Is uh, scheduled to be complete uh, in October. Uh, that's a feasibility study of. We're looking at down the road, updating our nineteen seventy three tree plant, so. We're at a point of inflection, or do we build a new plant or upgrade that, or maybe. Possibly. Just have distributions, so. That's. That's the great study sewer, again, this. Another CZM grant fund design is the. The second one was the wastewater treatment plant, electric upgrades, and the INI lining work. Which is proceeding with our funding, uh, that you all. And the INI work is is starting uh, very shortly, it's pre- been locked for tomorrow. And then we'll talk about facilities upgrades, and uh. So I'll go over the next slide. Uh, again, this is a lot of pictures here, South Main Street, um. Kind of going through the process here, you see the milling in the upper picture, uh, the cover crew comes in, milling both left and finished product. Sorry, lower right is. Oh, that doesn't finish product. Uh, the line striping for all, all of the streets that have been paved, is scheduled. Later this week, uh, but we look like there's rain, so it's probably. Push it Sunday or Monday, that's all. Next slide is. So there's a lot of pictures here, but uh, picture says a thousand words, so they, the lower, the one on the right-hand side really tells you why sidewalks are so expensive. See, yeah, a lot of handwork, specialized equipment, uh, the great old machine. Operator, smaller. Uh, so that's why sidewalks are more expensive than streets where you can just come down, spread the box. Uh, next slide please. More pictures, uh, next slide. Uh, so we also did Beechwood Street and Mill Lane. West Side of Three A, next slide. Uh, Pond Street, uh, by the school, that's showing milling left and finished product on the right. And I should mention all the sidewalks continues with these roads, uh, have been done. Next slide please. Again, recap, uh, South Main, Beechwood, Mill Lane, Pond Street, and uh. We have planned various crack ceiling, once we get our final bills of paving, and there's uh, proposals for engineering analysis for. On the street side. On. The section between Three A and New Street, which is uh, that's our. It's walking school, that's uh, that's uh, Three A. Uh, and shadows, which are the shared uh, bike arrows. Are gonna be more painting, so it's probably two or three nights of painting. Likely next week. Uh, next slide, listen. So for next year, um, we're working with the, you know, road sidewalk committee, we have a ten-year plan, we have a ten-year plan. Use it as a dynamic land, where roads, you know, move up and down based on. Plan utility work or other other things that are going. So, I think the next meeting of the sidewalk committee will focus on uh, that shift plan, we have an idea of. What it's gonna be, but again, we'll have it done, next slide please. Um, so upcoming road projects that are. Would have impacted, everyone should know about, uh, this is not a town project, but the Mass DOT Route Three A project is being bid in this next month. And that project involves. Road reconstruction from a few hundred feet, I think, constituent Henry Turner bit. Uh, into Cohasset northward, uh, past Beechwood Street, I think about Schofield Road. So that stretch of Route Three A, which currently is two lanes, you know, goes up to two lanes in each direction. Is gonna be converted to one lane in each direction, the center turn lane. And also have curb cuts and full sidewalks on both sides of the street. Uh, so it's gonna be a significant change in configuration, the lighting signal at Beechwood Street, which is. It's been prone to cast accidents, it's gonna be done, figured to make it more safe. And uh, also the water main is going to be replaced, which is a town water main, so. That's a non-participating cost that the water department should. That's a big, and and there's a big savings in doing that, you know, that would be actually, it's usually. Pennies on the dollar more costs, costs you. See, Pond Street, we had mentioned four, three, eight, King Street, that's on the short list, so one. Probably uh, three or four of the roads that people here for funding. In the in the next year, and uh, again, we're working with the sidewalk committee on this. Next slide please. Uh, so searching from roads to the CZM CZM grants, uh, studies. These were funded by Coastal Zone Management, this first grant studied. The effects of sea level rise and storm surge, uh, affect infrastructure, Cohasset power. So if you look at the lower left, generally, those are the two storm surge pathways based on sea level rise, the polar area, so. One on the upper, uh, the upper arrow kind of comes in past, uh, follows James Brook through the tide gate and. Fourth street, some street intersection, the one on the bottom is uh, kind of comes in the back door from the Gulf. Across Black Horse Lane and Summer Street, um. And of course, all residential in the area, in that area, and uh. Even more quickly, this uh, wastewater treatment plant, which treats all of the sewage. So the uh. Looking at those two concepts, they they developed some concepts on how to mitigate, you know, elevate the roadways, sidewalks. Other concepts to stop the storm. Storm surge pathway. Um, along that fourth street, Summer Street intersection, and then again. At Seven Street, Black Horse Lane, so this, I think uh, this one, there's a video on the website, if not, I think. Okay, can't put it on, thank you, uh. Every time I click on it, it goes like, it's it's like halfway through, but it's a YouTube presentation of all of this, and I encourage you to look at it. It's a lot of good visuals, uh, next slide please, I'll show you a couple, just snapshots, so it shows, you know, elevations of. Of what flooding looks like, uh, if you look down the lower left, uh, this picture of. A person, you know, just kind of give you a scale height, uh, and then the color gradations of what flooding would look like. And then the the image on the lower left, I put in there is present day, uh, and again, this is a hundred-year storm, which is not. Storm happens every hundred years, there's a one percent chance in every single year that that storm happens. So it's a little bit missed over in this case, so. So anyway, this is present day, uh, model, this is twenty thirty model, it's in the upper right, and then twenty fifty in the uh. And you can see, you know, the significance of sea level rise, and again, they've used. And they get into a presentation of the world, or they 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 use the uh, higher level risk. On per state on what sea level rise, so they have a twenty-five percent chance, a percent chance. Uh, next slide please. Uh, so, switching gears to water parker projects. Some upcoming water projects, uh, South Main Street, which is uh. Depot Court, this is not a paved section that we just did, it's from Depot Court. Saint Stevens to Summer Street, Saint Anthony's, basically, um, it's eighteen, late eighteen hundreds vintage pipe. And uh. It'll be tricky going through the village with bypass piping, a lot of real services through there, so that's something that. Is in design, hopefully, be good in the coming months, um, constructed next year. Uh, also, the shortlist, upon the ten, Short Street, hold a pipe, it's on this. Paving list to be done. Um, and Cedar Street Loop, which runs through the DPW yard, this has been a long-term goal. Really for any water park, but particularly Cohasset Water Park, we loop this outside of town. And by looping water mains, you uh. Get rid of dead ends, there's redundancy, you get better pressure, better water quality, um, so Cedar Street Loop. Is a dead end by the golf course, kind of where the power cords are, and then again, at the DPW. Gate entrance, and this will connect the dots through the DPW property. Also on the dock, there's sludge and gooey stuff. An RFP for design, and again, MWRA feasibility study. It's the report's scheduled to hit in May, October, uh, just in general. On that, we are partnering. Say, I think it may be eight other communities on. The concept of connecting to MWRA's group and having transmission mains come down. The end of the MWRA water system, which is at Blue Hills, uh, currently. And this concept is is kind of uh, grown a little bit because of. Maybe with naval air station development. Is a little bit ahead of the game, and they're they're already conditioned to connect to MWRA water, so. With everyone else's needs in the area. We fortunately have a wealth of water, but we also have, you know, a lot of people treating issues. And so we're looking at at uh, maybe partnering, if it makes sense financially to. Connect to MWRA, and that's what this is. Uh, next slide please. Uh, so, picture didn't show up in this, but they say upcoming sewer projects, uh. Member replacements of wastewater treatment plant, it's negotiated to bring manufacturer. Um, this next one is probably the most, the biggest impact of all the time. So it's, this is coming up, uh, again, it'll be a pre- been tomorrow on this. With contractors, this is the offer funding INI sewer lining work. So the sewer treatment plant is on kind of man-made peninsula in Jacob's Meadow, uh, so Jacob's Meadow is the marshland between. Elm Street, Summer Street, and South Main Street, and there are three main trunk lines that come in to that treatment plant. And, you know, it's the oldest part of the sewer system, it was constructed in nineteen seventies with Richard Pike. Pipe, so it's got a lot of joints, it's only pipe, there's a lot of leakage in its underneath marsh, so. So in times of heavy storms and heavy rains, there's like, you know, the treatment plant, which has a capacity. Permanent capacity of uh, four hundred fifty thousand gallons, and a normal daily flow of say, like. Three hundred thousand gallons will go up to one point one billion gallons, so all of that excess flow is INI infilling infiltration. And you're treating this basically fresh stormwater, and it has, you you know, you could inundate your plant. Which would require it into a high-flow bypass, and not have tertiary treatment, so. Primary treatment, sending up to the hollow, which is not. Saving, so, so this is an important project, uh, the INI lining work is basically, uh, they. They put a a cured-in-place liner into the existing pipe, so they push a liner through. And then it cures in place, so that it's. Called monolithic, it's not concrete, but it's a it's a continuous pipe with no joints. In the end, and then a robot goes in and it cuts out the sewer ladders. So when you're done, you have a continuous pipe with no joints and and no leaks. And also the sewer uh, manholes that are in the meadow will be lined and new covers the tops. And construction prevents tomorrow. Bid schedule is is next month or so, and we'll have a notice receipt for. Uh, Christmas and construction there, so it's it's gonna be a winter-spring project. There'll be activity in and around Elm Street, South Main Street, Summer Street. Particularly access points, you know, uh, that the town has to get into the meadow. And the lining machines are not excavation, it's basically going through this existing sewer manholes. Um, the next project is an AMP grant, this is, this is a grant that got. Stayed for asset management, it's basically capital inventory of everything, wastewater treatment plant. Uh, and prioritizing based on uh, failure uh, impact, so. Not just, is it old, is it gonna go bad and fail, but if it does fail, what's the impact of treatment process to lose all. Landers and, you know, issues of failure or something. That is uh, kicking off next month, uh, deliverable, that will be early next year. Sludge will be good, so that that sludge will be good as the those last two months, actually, like, I caught me from the previous slides, so. Disregard those, those are. All right, next slide please. Uh, again, this is, this is something that, um, we're gonna be putting out in the next couple of days after I wordsmith Kevin and Chris. This is gonna go on the website, it's just a a notice for the sewer projects that's going on, Jacob's Meadow. Uh, we'll give it to the residents that are above the meadow, and also the website. Basically, talking about working out as well to expect. Uh, next slide please. This slide is just, uh, okay, so uh, Cedar Street, um, for any of you golf up. At the golf course, you can see that, you can actually see the cemetery up there. Landscaping, tree removal, and created that cemetery, uh, and of course, you see the ongoing. Regular. It's just picture of some drainage. Uh, so Cohasset Facilities Department, uh, next slides are a little fancier than mine, uh. So just some updates on projects they have completed, uh, the public safety generator, so this is the police station, fire station down on Elm Street. The old, um, generator was in the basement, it was a nineteen, uh, late sixties vintage, um. They've. Saw the new generator outside, and uh, and enough, this is gives redundancy to the entire facility. Next slide please. Uh, the school projects they've been working on, so the flooring of the Deer Elementary School. They replaced it, all the old VCT tiles, VCT tiles with uh, new MCT, these. These tiles don't need to be stripped and waxed as as uh, VCT does. Still made, so it's been all the time in summer doing that, so these are thirty-year tile, hopefully, and. Saves all that later, uh. Some of the other school projects, they pressure washed all the materials around the high school at Deer Hill over the summer. We painted the Stucco High School. They've uh. We've been phasing for the past few years, painting hallways and common spaces and uh they've done a lot of that. This past summer as well. Um school kitchen has several different new pieces of equipment and um. They coordinated coordinated all that work with contractors and the photo you see in here was a sewer repair. This is in the playground, basketball court behind Deer Hill, there was a backup. Discovered last year and they wait till school was over, also finishes repair in the weekend. Between school being over and the camp of starting up, so that's what uh that was. Next slide please. Uh this is the building automation control, which controls all the HVAC systems. Um they got a a grant from Green Communities to upgrade all the systems. Big thing I want to highlight here and they want to highlight is is all the work that is staffed, so. In order to automate all of the 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 three schools with the same system. Uh the grant didn't cover all the costs of that, so staff pulled over five thousand. Feet of uh CAT five to uh. Save fifteen thousand dollars in order to get the right system so that now that all the systems are automated, same. Same software program and they can remotely monitor and control. They've been responding. Freeze uh freeze reports. That might be a listen, next slide. Oh, no, listen, um so Paul Pratt, uh this is this is a great project, so. On the lower side here, you see the old roof, there's a lot of leaks in the membrane, rubber membrane roof up there. And they installed. A new roof, the white roof, which is as applied as a liquid, has fibers in it, so it's just kind of squeegied over there. So once it cures, it's a continuous no joint membrane roof, it's E P D M. Um and it's it's obviously it's white, so it reflects the sun. This environmental series. Next slide please. This is uh an upcoming project, this is the Oskar roof, uh that you usually will see, so. The sides of the Oskar have shingle. Roof uh. Overlayment and then the middle is where all the roof is housed, it's a rubber membrane roof. Typical scenes, you can see the joints there. Um so that middle section will get the same E P D M treatment lightly and then, you know, the outsides will be reshaped. Uh that, just going back to, so that has been, um they've already met with the M S B A on that. Likely resales it by the M S B A. Uh and of course, it it facilities always doing routine maintenance, hundreds of belts and filters this year, uh over two two thousand. Believe that's less. Yeah, so with that, um. Showed in the presentation. Any questions? Well done.
I don't know, I should just a comment that it's. The amount of work that comes into keeping the apartment structure is tremendous and. Between the facilities committee and the sidewalk safety committee. Kudos to finally getting some of our our main brands done, especially South Main, I think that's a major victory for the town. And it was great to see that the smaller streets no land put in there as well. And when we, when you were able to put a couple small streets every year, we have to be thinking about. As a long term thing over a ten or twenty year period, so get a few small streets over a ten year period, getting up twenty and thirty, so that was great. Uh but just great work and keep up, and the final one I would say is it would be great to. Uh change over those vintage water mains, uh I don't I don't mind riding a vintage car, but I don't necessarily want a vintage water main from the. Eighteen hundreds uh running the water, so thanks for that.
Yeah, sure, uh I should mention that that those have been rehabilitated in the past, so. They they have been lined, so you're not looking at. I'm lying, but uh just the structural integrity of the outside.
Brian, thank you and thank you to Nick um for being here and I felt, you know, as we had our meeting. And this was one of our goals, it's really important that the town see. All of the nonseeable things that you guys do, just pulling five thousand feet of wire. You know, that's something that people don't see in the building and the cost savings by doing that and seeing the roof at the library. Um and and how that was a cost, there was a cost savings in that with similar life expectancy. Uh it's very important to me personally and I would agree, you know, I think my colleagues would agree that um these things get um. Publicized and kind of out there and and he sees when you clean the storm drains and things like that, so. Um I appreciate all the work you and your team do, all the work that Nick and his team do. And uh we are here to support like we talked about, look forward to next year's plans.
Sure, thank you for the invite.
I can put my last name, cause that's what I think, they do an amazing job. And again, it's kind of what's out, also it's I'm saying, so it's great to be able to get them some kudos. Uh and also, I mean, I was excited about doing this kind of exciting work, yeah, all the public work. So you have C D L license or you wanna learn, just reach out, we're H R director, I am, get you right.
Yeah, yeah, a little plug in that, thank you, Chris, uh so so we have thirteen, I guess, working positions and we. We have four vacant, so we're down thirty percent on.
We're strong guys right here. No, but but to to David's earlier point to um Megan, do you like we're down to social botec and. Free sprats that are looking to get into trades and things like that and.
Yeah, we posted that, we posted there, we posted at the driving schools Peterson and uh. Yeah, that may escapes me, but uh. So anybody you know, it's interested.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it. Okay, next up, um hopefully we can get through, so appreciates everyone everyone's patience with our full agenda. Town Hall Working Group uptake, very quickly, we had a meeting last week.
Yeah, last week. Two members were there. We'll be getting all areas of architectural. It's just coming up. Ideas in store and uh oh. So for building that's been sitting. Couple hundred years, I heard another person mention let's spare the building. Let's spare the building, we hope, just to get it up in place and assets in the community, how we get it there. We make cultural center. Agents. Places. Cultural events. Arms market. Two thousand in there, so we have policy. And just again, vibrant assets in the community. How best to serve our town employees. Place what is the best for the citizens in passing. So we're beginning to town hall, pay their tickets to. We're figuring right now. Front facing offices primarily. Are work. Permitting and planning, those are what people come in to see. So. What's the best way to get a replacement ideas yet? Is it why it is yet? Hope you have some time to get, there's no timeline. This is trying to find. Something that can bring the building back. It's gonna be cost effective. While on the last thing. Some more different thoughts and ideas. Anybody here has any ideas for that?
Same, thank you, Paul, so um I think I think this group is at a point where um we need to. Solidify the working room and um. Get confirmation from those that have been attending that they want to participate in a formal way and um. We need now on vice council now, we should be posting these meetings, even though it's a working room. Um and not an appointed or elected board or committee. But we should be posting the meetings and and we have, I know we've said at the end of every select board meeting. The following Tuesday is always our town hall working group meeting, now we should get. An agenda, Chris, you usually do the agenda, get it posted, um so that. It's uh people are are being aware of it, um because there's been a lot of great conversation and I I think just. Listening to all the ideas and everything being batted around, now it's time to to formalize this a little bit and um. Just decisions, not decisions, but suggestions could be forthcoming in the next three, six meetings, whatever it could be. Mr. Grayden.
Yeah, thank you, uh yeah, this is very important, uh and I know there there's been some uh. Spurted letters about that, so I think it's it's important to post it. Um I don't think it's at this point waiting town council. Um or at least I hope we are about whether. You know, the meeting law and a whole variety of things, but I think people should know they're welcome, they can. At 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 any time, the only thing would be like if. More of this two members of the select board or nobody were there, it would have to be forums or somebody would have to be. Uh the other thing is one of the elevated things, I've worked with a number of art groups. Uh or actually going back probably three years, the the concept that you take the auditorium. And you put it in some kind of nonprofit preservation trust, so you take it out of all the disposable. Uh extra costs, some of the estimates are are such that. The municipal cost would take a three or four hundred thousand dollar project and turn it into a million dollar project. We don't know how true that is, the concept of having art center that's independent. And funded privately, the town, of course, I would hope to be able to contribute from C P C money. But people should be aware that that there are some arts groups which deserve their support, which I know are actively working. With this through, so if you're interested in the arts and culture and drama, you should definitely be. Very, very active in this, you're welcome, because this is a real opportunity of a signature. And we also say that it's for town hall and, you know, thank you.
So I just want to clarify one thing, Mr. Grayden, I did see the town council and I articulated. Uh their advice on on topic, I'm not needing for any further advice on this topic from town council. And I I just want to be clear on that.
Okay.
Okay, no, it sounded like there'd be more forthcoming and there is not.
So the the meetings are not setting deal with.
No, we are.
So, as the.
No, Mr. Grayden. I I articulated her advice, we are going to post the meetings, right? Which is part of the opening law regulation and um. Will be there'll be minutes posted, now in terms of a forum of any board going, um. You're correct, we can't have more, we can't have a forum participate, you can have a member. Observe and not participate in the meeting, oh, that's that's correct.
So that's very.
Yeah, so you could, so. Whom- whomever is from the select board, someone else wanted to go and observe, they can't, they they just can't interject.
Yeah, I did, I do want to say, people that volunteer, so I I find this. This like one. And. The steps from a letter received by a number of officials in the county. Asking, these are the people that are in this group. Volunteers that stepped up, when asked, everybody who's asked, they stepped up. See the letter, so now magnifying project, that they sat on the back of. Posting, so I'm going to say that I found that disingenuous is the best, because there's two of those petition. I am on a one walk off. And one. Look at the plans and presented the town meeting. Select or made every attempt to work with this people. So I find the letter. Publicly at best, because those are the same group. That wanted the building up behind forty one Island Avenue, it's the same group, wanting by the yolks. And no interest in forty one Island Avenue, it's a town hall. No interest in that, they wanted, what's a building behind the existing town hall. And in that case, prior to that, they wanted to buy the yolks, turn that into a town hall. So what I'm seeing here is obstruction, again, after obstruction, after obstruction by the same people. That no real interest besides their own bosses, not observing, protecting, or taking care of. Building at forty one Island Avenue, which is currently town hall, in our view, will stay as a town hall. In any different, in any sort of iteration, but a place that is vibrant and in use. So again, I find, having to sit at this meeting tonight, discuss this with one letter. By someone. That we're doing something wrong, I suggest that petition should. Create their own, again, and present another thing to the town, to the select. This is just a working, they're entitled, they have a work, they can create their own. They were invited onto this group, reasons. I won't get into, they're not on this. Mark help, that doesn't stop any citizen creating their own work. I happen to be a citizen, people on that committee are not even a committee, who happen to be citizens. Now we have a town manager, ages, setting up regent, is because he's volunteering this time. Out of interest or concern with the building, empty staff, of course. That does not stop anybody from setting up their own. And that might be interesting, maybe come together, maybe some, maybe some interest, maybe some way to formulate a town hall role. This is just a group. Complicated, disingenuous is the best and obstruction is even worse. I will. That was not my letter, that said, I just wanted people to know that they are all.
And I I. We are all aware. Letters. But we're not here to discuss. Disgruntled sending letters. It's just really important to know that the good news is that the arts groups are coming together. That we have people actively interested in observing our town hall, so it doesn't get torn down. And also making it possible for very worthy drama. Arts groups to take, you know, care of that, which I think we often agree. But that's very important thing. And and I thank Mr. Grady for. For uh I believe you're chairing it or whoever. So I think we ought to know that and it's very important for everybody to know. To support it. And I also think it's very important that people. Get behind supporting the arts groups, which are the very important nonprofit sector. Hope, at least I hope. Um and I've been working some three years to do that. I hope. Turn that into a cultural.
Thank you. All right. Moving moving on, um select board draft handbook. Um I received one set of. Uh comments or edits. And I can quickly go through them if you have heard about me or if you're looking at it online. Point right to where the uh changes were. Um. So if you want to go to page three. Under duties of the chairperson, the last bullet point, be in direct contact with town manager for any emergencies regarding or related to the town of Cohasset that is new. Um the last bullet point on the following um section, um conduct meetings subject to Robert's rules of order. That is also new. Going on to page four. Um. In the middle of the page, under classes, select board, authority and duties under the authorities. Fourth line down. Um. It was deleted. For command and services of any town employee. So the line now reads that we'll ask the select board will not be bound in any way by any state interaction. I'm part of it. Sorry, that doesn't. Doesn't retain. I apologize. No member of the board by virtue of your office will exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the town. What was taken out was administrative responsibility will command the services of any town employee with respect to the town. So that. Um. In my opinion, is a material change. Just so that you're all of them and then you can come back and discuss which everyone's want to discuss. On page six. Under evaluation of town manager. Um. The sentence was expanded, so uh it reads town manager project and be completed in a timely manner. Um further down, the third bullet point from the bottom. Um. Members made requests from town hall employees. And any relevant requests and or contact there too in the execution of your duties as a select board member. David, did that capture correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Because I didn't understand it. Um. Six, page seven. Uh second bullet point, the top section. Members will refer constituent issues relating to town personnel, town manager, and or the appropriate town office. Is added to the end of that sentence and or the appropriate town office. On page eight, the last sentence of. Open paragraph. Says as this is added, as a courtesy of speaking upon an issue that is to be disseminated by the media to the public. A select board member should contact the chairperson of the select board to let me know as soon as possible. That's an add. On page nine, on page ten, I believe I captured. All of the changes from the first draft. Uh Mr. Fox, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh in the end of page six, members may request information of town hall employees and available requests and contact there too in execution of their duties as a select work member. Um. Is implied and I think it is correctly implied that uh that is subject to the availability and bandwidth. Uh the town hall staff being at. So. Uh I'm comfortable with the addition, uh as long as no one objects. To the unbrief caveat there. And no one can go to a member of the town hall staff and say, I need. Some exorbitant analysis.
I I I had, I I appreciate the caveat that that you articulated and um. Because I I did have concerns. I um. You know, I I think I think you're certainly. Pardon me, entry request that we make. Can can you make a copy? Can you proof this document for me? Um, do you have a copy of that report? I think. I think we should go in and say. Um. I would like a complete analysis done of every private street and when it was qualified. You know, just as an example. Is work that isn't readily available? And I I think your comment about having bandwidth and. Not interrupt. You know, required duties is is important. And um. I I say.
I'm requesting any edits. I think it's implied as written. That I think that that is there.
Okay. I did. I can give you the patient someone that you did.
But it says, nothing they request.
Yes.
Those that say the town hall staff needs to jump.
Okay, okay. Got it? Um. The only other edit. Um. I struggled with was on page four. That little paragraph where command services of any town employee was deleted. David, since you drafted it, could you expand on that a little bit?
Yes, um.
Thank you.
Restrictions on on some of the things of getting information. Dealing with the town ways. Didn't want the board to be restricted that a public citizen. And. And I really didn't want to get into it, but. Yet yet recently and just now, I am this week for preparing for this meeting. I asked on two occasions for some information. Um. That. But that. I got some of it by the meeting, but I wanted it to be in a tiny, you know, beforehand, and I said a couple emails, so I wasn't able to see them. So instead of having to go through. Uh one particular show to do it. Like I think that it's more advantageous for. Board in order to. Do their duties to that they can go straight to the source and say, why am I, you know, why am I going through one direction when I can go in another? Um and so I I think it's very important. I also think that. That it's nothing. Against it, but uh there's there's too much. Power and shadowing. That goes through the town banner. And and that all that 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 power of the information. The information is a current. Okay. And so we need to, in order to make proper decisions, we need to be informed. As to the information that we're getting to make proper decision making. And so I don't think it's your rest of one person that we should be able to go the other town. All ways of town hall people will get information that we need to do our jobs. It's it's just that that's it. Thank you.
So I. Yeah, I say I disagree that. The fact that that you're interrupting much. You ask the town manager. Town manager, select board working. Yes, Tom hit. Tom hit, that's a pocket. Then it's inherent in the town manager's staff, which can handle. They cannot report to us. And rusted call say. She's here. Shane needs to say, I need this, I need that, or we call. Something fine that you can maybe this. That's not safe. Something that you're looking for in front of your meeting. Town manager needs to know that. And if the town manager gets that, then you have that one person talk. Say they're creating. Disparate board instruction. That's the law. Staff. What's the town manager? They that um um. Begin the workload because he may have something that he needs to have been doing. Well, I didn't. I was told by. Slightly, I need this. So you have to have a clear board instruction. So I'm. And if that person acts, they have a chain. Town manager, Tom. Tom get get that that person. That person get it. You learn the situation. I don't really have a chance.
Mr. Fox.
Hi, Mr. Grady. Uh someone has to manage the staff, balance workload, make assignments. Help set priorities. Uh I think we are then competing with that. The organization also. So I am comfortable with challenging to the town manager. Um. I'm comfortable with the town manager often. But I think we need to respect his role as the day executive in charge of town hall.
If you're a public citizen, you would go straight to the source to get information. You wouldn't have to go through the town manager. I don't know why. To be elected to the select board, we would have to be restricting ourselves. And tie up a noose around ourselves to do.
Can I ask a question? I actually want to clarify this. This is going down. We don't. So so many files are voided. They don't get instant action. If a select board member is looking for something, trying to get something, that file reforming, and this is something that is already there, trying to get more and more stuff on websites. So people have to ask. Uh for example, every salary is in the town is in the town reports. That's where it is. Somebody asked for a man, we're not going to recreate it. It's in the town report. You can leave everybody's salary from last year. In fact, that's something we have to have ready. So if a member of the board needs something. We'll try to find it as quickly as we can. And it's just easier to have it. Directed around. So that said, if you went back to somebody and say, hey, can I get a copy of that report? It's easy. The 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 question isn't really getting that kind of stuff. It it's it's it. The question is, I need an analysis of someone else. Well, that's entirely different. That's that's creation of something that doesn't exist. That's something that I prefer the board. Like the board, for example, to the study. Doing a classification study. One member can say, do a classification study. There's a work. It's going to cost money. So you come to me and say, we really need to do it. There's a money. That's. So I I'm just getting a little blurred. So like. We talked earlier. So getting the employee's identity was fairly easy. I didn't have instant access to it. Maybe not. The actual employee. The other materials, some of the other materials that 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 may exist may not be in a format that the public ever get access. So so for example. Work product. It's like in in a draft form is not fully, it's just not. Um five products. At the same time, I want to make sure that folks have. Like, for example, uh. Jack's one of the people for six years. He's one on conservation. The stuff that he's got known. You haven't and and this this things that you may have seen. You would, for example, maybe my sister is Jenny. For her, for yours, she's brand new. Our members of the board that we had before, she did not. Or Kevin or someone else. So I also, I I I want to help. I I my goal is to get all of you the information. You need to be successful. Uh because the board's success is my success. So I want you to all succeed. So. I'm also trying to be as open as possible responding to this stuff. Um. If you need something quickly, the best way to get me is to call Tracy and get me something right away. Because I go through emails like daily or on a daily basis because I get. So. Uh and again, in 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 the last week. My description job. So I don't, I I I'm sorry, I didn't get it. As quickly as I wanted to on the. Is that it? It's that exists. Was that employment? Uh was the website something that's better? Some stuff I also just pointed to. It's like, hey, the study for the harvest. Here it is. Not going to necessarily mention on the copy. But I you know, I I I want to help navigate. Too. I I I think that's nice. Somebody committed for. Someone had something with a daisy tree. Uh she she needed some information, so I directed the gardeners. I mean, that's I mean, that that's. Because that's the right thing to do. So I'm happy to do that too to help kind of navigate. And 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 I may have to say, you know what? Don't talk to me. Go talk to Brian. Or I'll say, hey, Brian can give a call back. Let's get ahead of it. Um it just it's just easy to get. Now, at the same time, if you write something randomly, you just wanted something. It's something. It's okay. My concern is, and this happened before I got. Things have gotten very. Everyone was calling town council. Getting seven and we're getting five different answers. No one could agree on anything. So I I if if it's a problem, just tell me, hey, Chris. Because I can, you know, I I do better with it. So. Jason, make sure the daisy notes pop up. Some people call me, some people text me. Um so I I want to make sure we get information flowing at the same time. I just don't want to end up. One person's information may need somebody else's study. And and I don't I don't want to be in a place where. Staff comes to me and say, you know, select member X, just asking to do an analysis. Well, that's great. But thank you, but I can't do that because it's not, you know, the board already has seven of them. Okay, right? So. I I I just don't want to end up. You know, if you do see what I'm saying, and I'm I'm very willing.
I hear you regarding analysis, but. In the present case, they asked twice by email. Once before Labor Day, after Labor Day, say that I was looking for this information. It sits in folder. And that, as I wanted to compare what we had versus what the other town was in order to talk about things tonight. Now, to my knowledge, nobody else in this board asked for any documents from August thirty first to today. So mine was the only request from this board for information unless someone else wants to state that they were asking for documents for the last two weeks.
David, that doesn't mean that's the. Only work the town hall staff had to do.
For two weeks to ask for. The something which already exists. I I don't think that's 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 a hard thing to do.
I don't know the specifics. I just know that when I've gone into town hall with information. If it's at someone's fingertips, I get it. Very quick. If it's something that requires search or digging, it takes longer. That's been my experience and I respect that because what I see from folks at town hall is that they are hardworking and responsive to the extent they are able to.
I think this was readily available. And and again. Chris already said about it. That's fine. I'm trying to beat anybody up about it. I'm just saying in regards to this change. Is instead of at some point, instead of saying go to town manager, you just go to the source to go get it. Because in order to make an informed decision, you need the information. So what I'm trying to look at, what we had versus what another town has. That that's, I want the analysis to be done beforehand. I don't have to do it the day of. Or before the meeting or or something like that. I mean, that that's, how can we make an informed decision if we don't have the information? The 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 fact is we can't.
Well, well, to to that to that point, so I I would I would say that um. One board member can't have the information to make an informed decision. All five board members would need to have information. To make an informed decision. So how do we? How do we process? Requests and ideas for information to support the agenda? So that everybody has it. I I think I think that's a fair talking point. Um I think whether the request goes to Chris with a CC to the appropriate department. Or a CC to me or a phone call to me saying, Ellen. I'm not getting a response. And then I pick up the phone and I say. A board member is asking for information and hasn't received it. We shouldn't have to be that way. Sometimes it is. And I'm through the House School Committee again. It's it's um, you you like to, you like to be responded to. But it it. Doesn't have any guardrails around it. So I think to me, that's what's a little bit worrisome. Um. In in terms of information being requested.
It's immediate law. I just think that if you're going to request information and it's not coming in time. Now, chief executive officer. Who's there? And if we're rehearing, what you do is you also have the chair of a committee. If you want us to maybe check ourselves, I would expect that someone. Board member is satisfied with something that's not getting resolved. From. With the town manager, but it starts moving on to C D H R. D P W director. Is that that the other thing of of? Facilities. Or any of our other committees are uh. In town halls. So. If you're not getting the satisfaction that you want, what I would do. Is I would CC the chair. And in my contact or I would call the chair. And. Those who might, why hasn't uh no select board member actually seen their information? Yet the appropriate answer. But again, I don't think it's.
I hear you. I don't want to dig any deeper on it. And I think I framed the issue this way forward. It's just that I don't I don't want to have to play that game. I I really don't. I mean, if I ask for something in a couple, you know, a couple of weeks. That's more than enough time. That's it. So I I hear what you're saying, but I wasn't asking for any analysis. I was asking for anything. I was asking for. A simple document. And. That's it. So I I don't want to dig deeper. I don't want to. I but I think I framed it. I've explained it. And that's that. So. Okay.
Last. Um. Well, this is ten, uh first of all, in David's saying, you ask for something. Or any citizen asks for something. And two weeks later, it still isn't there. Document. I don't know why. You have to have all these roadblocks. And this is ten page bureaucratic um jargon. Who's. Really, I don't see that there is a problem. We have ten pages of coordinated regulations, which I don't believe that of course is a problem. Um but they do give an excuse for not losing information. We have a clear example. I've given up. Asking for information. I've given up. And I mean, call. Uh the. We don't need this. I don't see that there's a. An abuse. I don't see that this addresses anything that is. That's germane, is any kind of abuse. It's like, let's muzzle. Let's make sure that people can ask questions, that people can ask for information. If they do, we'll give them a whole list of bureaucratic ways. This is the process. This is the process. Bureaucracy is always use a process to deny that information. So uh and, you know, two weeks for a crucial doc uh document. I'm assuming it was crucial for something you must select for it. I mean, that's just, it's just no excuse for me. And and trying to say that there should be a, a process that you can't get that, that's just kind of. You know, we can't. We're supposed to be governed, not restricting information, controlling information. And furthermore. If there is anything in here that that lives in actual law, then it's already there. And if it doesn't live in actual law. We don't have the ability to create a regulation that is mine. So we're wasting your time on this. This is a, an attempt to just restrict and control informations. God love, God love the bureaucracy. Um I look at this, if you show me these things, where they live in in statute. Right? Me. But I don't see that there. And I don't don't think it responds, it speaks well to this board's responsibility for openness and disclosure to um the citizens. And yes, sometimes it's uncomfortable for citizens to ask questions and want to know what's going on in their, in their government. Well, that's democracy. So I'm not, I have no intention of of voting for this. I think this is a insult to the concept of open government, and I don't think it has any statutory um ability to be enforced. My comment.
Quite sure the young man may would agree with you, but okay, so I'm. Yeah, get it on page four.
Yes, get it.
Okay.
I don't think that's like bureaucratic, actually, I think it's. Saving workers being disrupted, working, they are spending time with town manager. More provide with information, some some provide with the information. That's on. Town manager to go out or to speak to the person that was supposed to provide. I think you have to have. Change command. It's gotta go. You know, I mean, you have too many cooks in the kitchen. You're gonna burn the pie. So. You know, if you don't get the information request. Then you follow your own fortune and cannot get what I asked for. In two weeks, very simple request. This was. Okay, the person that did not provide is held accountable by the person, that person's accountability. Just the board, it's the town manager. If it's saying, you know, I'm taking A H R. That person, that's all I'm saying. Title taking any information that you asked. I'm just, my thoughts are that. He called the board and said, contact the town manager. Slayer. So disrupting, maybe potentially. Creating now morality. I'm not saying big items, small items like that. Just, it's just, there should be a quarterly workload to that. With the occasion of. Comment, comment, not providing good information. There's no one else to blame at that time.
So is is there a modification? That would be agreeable? Maintain that for command services of any town employee without. Town. Sorry. Well, without, without um. Town manager, I don't want to use the word consent, town manager. Um. Competent, I mean, what a better expression, C C. So so that town manager is aware of what's being asked of the staff directly. Um but the request can go. To um the appropriate department. And it's just a C C. Like, I I I don't have a word for this. For command services of any town employee um. With. And I don't want to use the word. What's the word I want, guys?
I make a suggestion. We don't have, as select board members, we don't have the ability to demand. Um any town employee to do anything. Already. Missed my point earlier. I think with. None of this. Um we don't have the authority. These are solid problems that are not big. I can't call. And anybody down um and tell them to do anything. I don't have that authority. The only authority I have is in the select board, and that's already. So we're spending all this time on on stuff that we don't have the authority to do. Don't, I don't see any burning issue. If somebody has a burning issue that they see, that they've seen, that that is is solved. But there isn't. So what are we wasting your time? Ten o'clock at, ten o'clock at night. Um and 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 we'll walk, we'll argue with each other and we don't have the authority. And I haven't heard anybody said, where's the? Where's the issue?
I understand. A number of, this is right in front of. Number of boards and committees in town hall, people that are interested, issues they want to take up. So a number of people coming to town hall any given day, right? Uh my statement is back that whoever they want to speak to and demand something, or look for something, or ask for something. Well, that person that's working in town is doing their job. And everyone's. Took it to ask, I need this, I need that, like a copy of this report, like a copy of that. Right? I encourage that.
I think the citizens need to.
So that's what I'm saying about. That would interrupt me saying. I said the same. Doesn't pose.
And that's all, that's the whole point. There isn't an issue.
We we try to be responsible. Answers and somebody. Right, and so if you can. To answer. For some, for for having a response. And he was talking, but Tracy took care of him, and I won't. Improvise to get to get the interest.
Did you?
Yeah, so so.
I always try to be. Right, same. Yeah. Yeah.
So the the difference with someone who's coming off the street, someone's on a board committee, is that someone on a board committee. That they're they're usually looking for information for some of the policy direction, something, I mean, not that it's less important, something. Just that said, I think the chair went down. One of the things that we want to make sure is people to send information out, somebody to come to meetings, say, well, I got this, we take this. Why didn't I get it too? Right, so and and try not to have that happen. Take that there's something coming up, and you forgot to put it back, or somebody didn't think it was relevant, right? So and and it just doesn't happen. This, it's advisory, it's capital. It's planning to allow. Like, right, but it's. At least make C C on something that's helpful, so that way you can actually stop running over over things. I did that. That's a circumstance in the past for someone to be filing this for the same thing. I'm not saying anything. And I had people running all over the place. It's like, all trying to run the state.
All right, so so what if we change the language to, or request the services of any town employee, town manager, and coffee?
Are you talking about page four?
Yeah, you're still on page four. I think this is the only, the only.
Yeah, it's the only one.
Yeah, so. The original language was for command services of any town employee. I would change that to, or request the services of any town employee, the town manager, and coffee.
Oh, tell me.
With the the town manager.
Well, it's, the language starts at the beginning by saying, no, no, or we'll exercise administrative respect to. So so it's a negative.
Oh, it's a negative.
I I have to point out, we don't have the ability now at all, and we never have.
Jack, the guy who is about setting up expectations for each other, how we're gonna work with each other.
You're you're welcome. You're welcome to do it, but I.
I stop on you asking this. I agree with you that it's not people finding. It it's setting expectations. So it's a handshake agreement. That we're gonna work together this way to achieve. What's best for the citizens of the class. It's not a leaf document signed and looked.
No, it's re- it's recommended by the M M A, which has their own handbook, which is an inch thick. And that's recommended, and many, many towns have anywhere from, I mean, I'm sure it's town. Or Marshville has their document with every single policy attached. So um I like, first the way you phrase it. Our agreement amongst ourselves, how we're going to conduct ourselves. So um and if if we conduct ourselves this way, there's no issue. So what's the harm in having protocols? And it's um, you know, it's it's when we don't conduct ourselves this way, that that we have a protocols. If I, if I'm not aligned as the chair of the select board, and I don't share information, or I withhold information from the select board. Or I have private conversations with the town manager and give him instruction. On my own behalf, without the consent of the board, because we are a board, we are one entity as a board. Then this document allows the other four members to call the chair out. And and that's, it kind of gives us all promise.
We can do that now. Anyway, we don't need a. My whole point is, we don't need all.
Well, well, I guess.
We don't see any, any problem. It it's not infensible. Um and quite honestly, it's ten o'clock at night, and I think it's it's wasting our time, wasting my time. We have anybody else who'll go till, till, till midnight, you go till midnight. But. Yeah, just, just, this is.
David, how are you with the language that I proposed?
I think just that part makes me wordsmith that. Because you've got, because it starts with a negative, and then I did.
Ends with a positive.
Ends with a positive, so it doesn't work. I think we could maybe, um, you know, pass everything else that's subject to this.
Subject to this one provision.
This one provision, and then and and work on that in the next two weeks or something, that might be.
All of the other edits are fine.
Okay, I call the vote, please.
Okay, so um. May I have a motion to adopt a town who has the select board handbook and protocols of. Of September seventeen. Uh edits with the exception of page four. First paragraph, you are required to be reworked. So great, we moved it.
Second.
What second? Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh. All opposed?
Nay.
I for one. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for that. Okay, um F Y twenty six budget message, there were no edits that were sent to me, so it is as of the last meeting. Um so unless we have any changes at this time. And I have a motion to approve the F Y twenty six budget message.
Aye.
Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Brady?
Uh aye.
Okay, so five oh aye on the budget message. Thank you. Okay, special town meeting. We need to open a warrant.
It is a warrant, official closes at seven. Uh from, this is just for citizens.
Okay. So so that's a, a, correct? Okay, um I'd like a motion to open the warrant for special town meeting uh for citizens petition deadline being September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you give town manager update?
Uh just one quick, uh. The town has just received its twelfth consecutive award for financial statements. We got the finance office decision. So I want to thank all of us, and all the staff, our auditors, and all the boys who actually make all the things. It's another example, the town doing the right thing, and maybe it's, it's financial statements. Benchmark against the national standards and.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, uh select board comments, Mr. Flex.
Uh so the registration there.
You, Mr. Brady. Mr. Brady.
Uh my, my uh comments, I think, of the yes, this select board conduct. I just reiterate. I I mean, I'm trying to keep a straight face and not laugh, but here, here we have codified something we have no authority to codify. We spent an awful lot of our, our, our time. Um ridiculous. Good. Back it, no more.
Mr. Um.
Thank you. Uh I was able to go with the school administration superintendent uh to view the school important remain. Regarding looking, looking over a project based learning. So that was a very, it was great to see the school administration take this trip to go out and do that. It's very illuminating. I know there'll be other uh views that they'll be doing with other schools and other programs around. To try and benchmark, look at, look at new things that would be appropriate for the school system. So just want to thank them for putting it together. Uh again, it's illuminating, big work on that. I'm sure it's a feature.
Great, thank you. Um I mean, just uh reiterate that we will know by Friday. Please mind. Um we'll know by Friday morning if we're gonna have a Zoom meeting to review any planning articles next Tuesday night um at six o'clock. Um if you have any agenda items for the following week's meeting, your first meeting, please get them to me by nine AM next Tuesday. For our agenda seven meeting. And I have a motion to approve minutes of September fourth. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No topics, uh so I'd like a motion to adjourn at ten ten P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.